Good evening, everyone. The time is second clock and we're going to begin. I'm calling this school committee meeting, this special school committee meeting to order this Wednesday, June 25th at 7:00 PM. Please note, we are live streaming on our YouTube channel and the recording will be available on our YouTube channel afterwards. I'd like to introduce our school committee members and now any attendants this evening. On my left, I have Mrs. Mayneville, Mr. Guthrum, Ms. Roy Thomas, Superintendent Powers. On my right, I have Mr. Fitzgibbons, Mrs. Davenport, Mrs. Conrad Obranto. Mr. Lo should be here in a moment. We also have an attendant Assistant Superintendent Barry. And Natalie Sidorbit has taken over as this evening, and I am the chair, Rachel King. Please join us as we rise.
The United States of America, and the Republic of which stands our nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I now think we're handing out agendas. I did want to make a note, the most recent agenda that we did update on June 23rd does have public comment at the beginning and the end. I wanted to make sure we gave community members a time to come up and do public comment if they would like to. So that is first on the agenda today.
May I make a motion just to take items three and four out of order real quick so that we can dispose of them?
Yes, Mr. Fitzgibbons. And actually, item four is not going to be on the agenda. That was actually under the consent agenda, so we can disregard that one. It is just item reaction.
I will modify my motion.
Thank you. So Mr. Fitzgibbons has made a motion to take item three out of order. Do I have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So item, I'm sorry, did I say the wrong one? I'm sorry, it was item four, if we can, I apologize. Item four is the appointment of the school physician. Item five is the acceptance of the.
I have a different agenda.
Sorry, I think you were looking at the one with no public comment.
I was looking to take appointment of school physician out of order.
Okay, do you want to throw your last motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to take appointment of school physician out of order, no matter what number it is.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Sorry for the confusion. We have a motion on the table by Mr. Fitzgibbons. Do I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So this is just a housekeeping for the appointment of the school physician for Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 53. As Nurse Brandon indicated at the main meeting, the current district appointed physician is retiring as of June 30th. Accordingly, we need to consider and vote on the new appointment, Dr. Daniel Muse, prior to July 1st. We did have it on the last agenda, but we did not have a copy of the signed contract yet. So I do have that tonight, which I will assign. So we do have his contract and resume, which was in drive. Accordingly, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Dr. Daniel Muse as the new bridge order Rayham Regional School District Physician.
So moved.
So moved by Dr. Ms. Roy Thomas, second by Mr. Fitzgibbons. Do we have a discussion or questions on this? It was, but I think it was in the June, the last meeting drive, because we tabled that and did not act on it at the time. So it would have been in the June 11th, I believe. It was a copy of his curtail and detail and a copy of the contract, which I have a copy assigned today. Do you want me to give you my copy to this guy?
Do we need a vote, don't you?
Did you just want to look at my?
Oh, okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have a question?
I'd appreciate if those down at the end of the table could speak up so I could hear them. Thank you.
Yes, discussion is on the table. We have a motion on the table, a few questions.
Is there evaluation of the physician or was appointed?
Yes, the school physician is appointed annually basis. So certainly if we were to have any issues with Dr. Muse, not that I anticipate any, because he is well regarded. He works with all of our local police and fire departments, as well as some of the local public schools. But certainly, that is something that can be taken up on an annual basis.
Does anyone else have any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Back to our agenda, item two, public comment. The school committee welcomes information, concerns, and opinions from those attending the meeting. In order to give those wishing an opportunity to speak and check compliance with open meeting law and other legal obligations, and avoid disruption of the meeting, the committee will not engage with the speaker or with one another in deliberation on comments as they are presented during comment periods. At its discretion, the committee may schedule issues raised by a speaker for deliberation at a future meeting. To reiterate, this is a time for the members of the public to pose comments and concerns regarding agenda items, and the committee is not able to respond in any way at that time. If you would like a personal response, please email the committee or superintendents directly following the meeting. The chair will now open a public comment for a period of 12 minutes per policy PEDH, and would ask anyone who wishes to speak to please approach the microphone and provide your name and address. And please limit comments to three minutes.
Madam Chair, could we waive the policy on 12 minutes and a little bit more leeway on that? At your discretion, I'd make that as a motion.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Fitzgibbons. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Lo. I think that's a great idea. We have a lot of people here who I'm sure want to be heard and have a lot to say on this matter. So I would be very honored. Do I have any other questions or comments on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We will now go to the comment, and we will waive the period of 12 minutes. But I do ask that if you have repetitive comments, to try and keep those to a minimum, to allow people to speak that would like to. So if anyone would like to come up and speak for a public comment, please come to the microphone and state your name and address.
Well, it's so Ryan, can you go over it?
I don't think it's on, it's so Brian. Thank you.
Elizabeth Orion, 15 Wallace Road. Excellence and education for all. That is the mission of the BR Regional School District. That mission doesn't live in words, it lives in action. Excellence doesn't happen by accident, it doesn't happen when we are forced to settle for life. Excellence requires.
Speaking about your open, we can hear.
Yeah, please angle it towards you a little. Forget, super close to.
Excellence and education for all. That is the mission of the BR Regional School District. That mission doesn't live in words, it lives in action. Excellence doesn't happen by accident, and it doesn't happen when we are forced to settle for us. Excellence requires investment, integrity, vision, courage, and commitment, even when it's hard. I'm a Bridgewater resident, a mother of four with three students still in the district. Two with five-year war plans and one with a night on an IEP. And a special education advocate who works with families across the state. I'm here tonight because I am deeply disappointed, not in our school district, but in the failure of the recent override vote. I'm disheartened by the low road turnout, the spread of misinformation, and what appears to be a lack of transparency, immunity, and leadership across schools towns. Some residents in town government push personal agendas that did not reflect the best interests of our children or our community. But I want to be clear, the results of that vote are not a reflection of the value or necessity of the school budget that was proposed. That budget was developed carefully and intentionally to meet the actual needs of our students. And now, more than ever, I'm urging you, the school committee, to stay the course. Do not step back from advocating for the resources our students need to deserve. I saw residents accuse the district of being monitoring, mismanaging funds, or the district was labeling students high wages just to check taxes and receive more funding. I saw people point to classrooms with fewer students and assume incorrectly that this was a waste or manipulation. These statements are not just untrue, they are deeply disrespectful to the administrators, educators, service providers, and families who are working every single day to support the needs of each student. The truth is, students' needs have changed. The number of students requiring intensive supports is growing, the cost of our district places rising, the need for specialized staff, such as professionals, reading interventives, ESL educators, and support personnel is urgent. And the reality is that federal and state funding do not come close to covering what is legally and ethically required to meet the needs of all students. Our district is not here to mongering, it is telling the truth. And as someone who spends their career in the space, I can tell you that what is being asked for in this budget is not extravagant, it is necessary. I also want to speak to the many disparaging comments made about our educators over the past few weeks. While teacher contracts were recently negotiated, that fact has been used unfairly and in bad faith to try to community against those who are showing up every single day for our kids. Often spend more waking hours with our children than we do during the school year. Supporting our teachers is not just about pay, it's about recognizing their time, their effort, and the emotional labor they carry with them while beyond the school day. They deserve their respect through gratitude, not resentment. So to them, I say thank you. I urge you, the school committee, to continue pushing forward. The outcome of the vote does not change what is right. We cannot fulfill our mission, and we cannot provide excellence in education for all to scale back, water things down, or accept good enough. Now is the time to build district capacity, not dismantle it. Now is the time to invest in our students, not walk away from them. And now is the time to lean, not to lower our expectations. This moment calls for true leadership, not retreat. It calls for commitment to the school's mission, even when the path forward isn't easy. We cannot build stronger schools by cutting away at their foundations. We cannot create a better future for our town by shortchanging the very people who will one day leave it. I came here tonight with my children because I want them to see what it means to fight for your community. I want them to know that their school is worth it, their teachers are worth it, and their future is worth it. Please continue to stand behind the budget you already determined was necessary, the one built around real needs, real goals, and real values. Show our students, our teachers, and our community what it looks like to lead with integrity. The vote may have failed, but our students do not. Let's not fail them. Keep moving forward. Thank you. Elizabeth Sharp, 1000 South Street. Can you hear me okay?
Yes. I'm here tonight to quickly remind every person here or watching, whether you voted for the override or not, that this failed override means our school district remains the seventh lowest funded school in the state of Massachusetts, and now falling. We are number 281 out of 288 regular school districts in Massachusetts for funding per student. That is not a statistic to be proud of, or to keep fighting to hold the title up. Do any residents really want to live in a town that can claim the title of seventh lowest funded school in Massachusetts? No. So now let's work together, officials from both towns, the school committee, the parents, and the residents, to figure out how we're going to move forward now, to raise our budget so that we no longer claim the title of seventh lowest funded school in Massachusetts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jean.
Make sure everybody can hear the test. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school committee, and Superintendent Powers. It's good to see you guys again. Told you I would be back. And to the newest members, two months late, but congratulations, and good luck on your first time. I'm here this evening to continue my advocacy to put the children of our communities. The budget that was approved on March 26th is what our children deserve and desperately need. It's like a little history lesson, though. Back on March 8th of 2023, Mr. Dolan proposed the budget that, if my notes are accurate, was around $98,750,420. Then on March 26th, this body backed off the proposed budget, after speaking with the towns, to maintain staffing levels in the district, so that they didn't, but that we didn't have to cut. By doing so, the improved budget was lowered to $88,123,271. With a statement by Mr. Dolan, that the towns can only meet the assessments that they can meet, and other committee members saying, "It is what it is." Unacceptable, as I stated that meeting. Back to the last budget, the proposed budget was $96,820,460. Approved total budget of $90,756,859, and a loss of 24 positions. Now, on the table, just so I have the date correct. March 26th, we put forth what was approved, which is necessary and that the school is deserving. I implore you, stay strong. This is what is right. What's doing right is not always the easiest path, but it is necessary. I hope that you will recertify this budget, and that we move forward and get the students what they deserve and desperately need. Thank you.
Ashley Mallard, Grange Park. I'm tired, I'm sick again, probably after the 12 hours of sitting next to Mr. Fitzgibbons, as we waited at the polls on Saturday to the disappointment that a handful of us stood and waited around for. Not every time councillor was there, though, and I didn't see a select board member sitting here waiting on Rayham's vote. But I saw school committee members. I saw school committee members, and it's our handful of town members who've worked their butts off for the last six months solid, and still failed. And we didn't have the support of every single person, even sitting up there. And we didn't have the open support of our town council members, and I would argue some town council members working against us actively. In fact, so actively, it created vicious attacks on staff, on myself directly, on some of the staff members here. It took only a few of you, a few times, to speak up, and I appreciated that. But this created a divisive community, not the community that we want to bring up. And I actually, I'm not really saying this to you, I'm saying this to the Bridgewater Rayham town leaders, is if we want our community to be better, we have to take care of those who need help for their future. You have to take care of those who cannot vote. And taking care of the innocent children in our community is how we do that. And that takes true leadership. And whatever that number is that you come up with tonight, I advocate that you push to protect the children. But whatever that number is, is going to require an override in the future again. And it can't be on the backs of a handful of parents and the reputation of the teachers in this community. Because this was exhausting to do alone. And it somehow still didn't get it across to every parent that they needed to come up and vote. We did a successful debt exclusion for Mitchell. The advocacy and the amount of meetings and the months and months and months of meetings that were prepared is what we're going to need to educate the community, and educate some of our town councillors, so that they understand how school systems work. And if that means they need to come in and visit a classroom that's oversized, or visit a special ed classroom with the assistance of the superintendent standing there next to them, they might need to see it. Because when I see someone post on Facebook, "Well, my class had 33 kids in it in 1998", the times have changed, and people in the community, specifically our leaders, need to be able to advocate for the children. And if they're not educated enough on what that means, we need to do that for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mallard. Do I have anyone else who would like to speak right now? We will have another public comment.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Fitzgibbons.
I may ask, did you invite Ms. Riley and Mr. Lo to come down to speak to us?
I did, Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Thank you.
Seeing no other members of the community who would like to speak, I'm going to close public comment at 7:22. And there will be another opportunity to speak following at the end of the meeting as well. But thank you so much for everyone that did speak so far. Next on the agenda, which is why everyone is here, and why we're here, and I've been talking about this for months, as Mrs. Mallard said, is the fiscal year 2026 budget, which is the main point of this whole special meeting. I have a lot to say, which is very provocative as chair. It's one of the few good things. One of the few bad things was my stomach ache all night thinking about this burden on our shoulders. I know how everyone in the community feels, how our staff feels, how parents feel. So before we begin, I would just like to say how deeply disappointed and disheartened I am by the override failing in both of our communities. I'm worried about our students in K through 8, who might struggle now in a classroom of too many peers to get individual attention. Our most vulnerable special education students at our special education staff will struggle with increasing case loads. Our classroom teachers were already overloaded with curriculum to teach, and will have even more students in their classrooms to connect with. Our high school students have hoping to put themselves in position for the best college admissions place with a lack of AP classes. Our high school students with a huge lack of electives to fill their schedules. I worry about our staff that are facing uncertainty, of having to look for a new job if we cannot bring back all of those 96 positions we gave Pink Slips to. The weight of all this is on my shoulders, the shoulders of the rest of the committee. We have tried to be as transparent as possible during this process, and all of our budget documents have been made available on our website. We've had informational meetings, we've tried to get the information out there. This is not mismanagement, it is simply, just like at home, the amount of revenue increase each year is not keeping up with the expenses of services we are required to provide. I understand the override failed in both towns, and the majority of those voters who have decided that they do not want to increase their taxes to fund the school district. And maybe they voted no for a number of reasons, but please know, even if you do not have children in the district, the education of our children is something that everyone should care about for the sake of your community. And our budget and the town budgets are not household budgets. We can do our best to cut costs and find different health insurance collectives, review our contracts and consolidate buses, but we're providing a service to the community. And that huge majority of how we do that is with our staff. Losing positions is going to impact how we do that. More importantly, unlike a household budget, we can't downsize our buildings, refuse students who enter the district, refuse services or transportation. We're mandated by the state to provide all these services. And unfortunately, the state leaves the majority of that to our local towns. We have been advocating for more from the state, for more special education reimbursement, more transportation reimbursement, more Chapter 70 funding. Many school committee members here have been doing that. I know the BREA and many of the town councils have been doing that. But we need the support of towns right now to fund us. And just like was stated at public comment, as of 2023, the last available data, and now it's even worse, BR fell near the very bottom of per pupil expenditures in Massachusetts based on our operational budget divided by how many students we have. We are not spending enough on our students, even if the perception is we are overspending. When a school system thrives, so does the community as a whole. So I want to thank our parents, community members, and staff members who worked tirelessly to support their students during this budget process. We appreciate everything that you did to support us. Regarding tonight's process going forward, to clarify, because I know there's been some misinformation out there, I have confirmed this with Desi, with MASC, our League of Council, and reviewing the laws myself of how we proceed from here and what our options are. For the 15-day extension that we have from Desi right now, this evening prior to June 30th, the school committee has to reconsider, amend, or recertify our budget based on the failed town overrides that occurred this week. We have to approve a budget that the towns also approve by July 1st. If we do not have a budget by July 1st, Desi will step in and work with Ms. Babalova, our Director of Business Services, Superintendent Powers, and the Business Office to create a 112 budget. A 112 budget is a fiscal year 2025 budget with only slight increases in revenue from the district and Chapter 70 money allocated. Desi then takes that budget, divides it into 12 equal amounts to disperse, and the state will fund as monthly amounts, and the towns will also be directed as to fund via a monthly assessment. As you can imagine, that will not nearly cover our expenses. In the interim, we must work with our towns to approve the fiscal year 2026 budget by December 1st, or we are locked into that 112 budget until the end of fiscal year 2026, June 30th of 2026. Ms. Babalova has been working with Desi to prepare all of these documents. Regarding this evening, we have several options and scenarios that we can reconsider, amend, or recertify regarding our fiscal year budget. Superintendent Powers will present several options that we have worked through and budget scenario. Superintendent Powers will present several options that we have worked through and budget scenarios for your review and consideration. If we accept the three percent from Rainham and four point six seven percent from Bridgewater that the towns have already approved in May, we go to amend our budget to that amount and certify that to DESI, and we will have an immediate budget before the July first deadline, thus avoiding the one-twelve budget. Superintendent Powers will speak to the implications of that budget, which we had discussed at previous meetings. If we amend our budget that we approved in March twenty twenty-five and approve any other budget this evening, because the overrides failed and the towns have not appropriated any other money above the three percent and four point six seven percent, we must send that amended budget to the towns as a second chance to approve. They will then have forty-five days to either approve or disapprove that budget. We then go to a one-twelve budget with DESI as it will be past the July first deadline while we wait for their decision. If the towns disapprove that amended budget, we by statute, because we have not been able to approve a budget after two attempts, go to a joint town meeting where we'll have to publish a warrant in both towns with a budget article, obtain a moderator, a large venue to host the event such as the high school football stadium, and voters from both towns would be invited to show up and vote such as similar to the Rainham Town Meeting. Going back to Mr. Fitzgibbons, I did invite both leaders from, Mrs. Riley from the Select Board of Rainham, as well as Mr. Moretti, the President of Bridgewater Town Council, to attend tonight's meeting and speak at public comment. And I did have a very good conversation with Mrs. Riley regarding tonight and what our thoughts were. But both did decline, and we're looking forward to what our decision is going to be forwarding to them. I hope that answers a lot of the questions about the procedural aspect of tonight. And Mr. Powers is going to walk us through a presentation of the different options that we will have to consider, as well as if other members have other options they would like to discuss.
Good evening, thank you, Madam Chair, and to the school committee. And again, I want to thank everybody for showing up tonight. I do want to first start by saying, echoing many of the comments that have been made here tonight. That, you know, I get to and disappointed, obviously, we were very hopeful overrides passing by the towns. It's disappointing that they do not, that they did not, I feel as though that this is a step backwards for our school district. But what I am confident in is the staff that we have to face this challenge. So I want to acknowledge them and applaud them for all their efforts in the past and obviously going forward. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank our losing panics, you know, always trying to find silver lining in things. And what I want to away from this experience is that we are truly, as a community, surrounded by important parents that make the right decisions, advocate for the right things, and so to all of those individuals, I know there were many, and I've certainly tried to connect with as many as I could. I didn't want to just pump and say thanks, I appreciate it. This evening, I do want to provide again some general overview, some of this information will be repetitive, this information will seem multiple times. Certainly talk about multiple times in different forms, but obviously I wanted to be able to provide the context as well. So as you know, and again, some of this has already been covered, both the proposition to an apple overrides were placed on election ballots in both towns, June twenty-first and June twenty-fourth, unfortunately they both failed. So as Mrs. King went over the options, school committee must determine their next steps. First, to recertify their current proposed budget of the hundred and sixty million dollar operating budget, send it back to the towns. At that point, we have seven days and the towns have forty-five days from sending it to them to approve or not approve. School committee could obviously reconsider or amend the current proposed budget to a lesser amount, and again, send it back to the towns for their approval, obviously the district would have to save seven days to certify, and then the towns would have forty-five days to approve or not approve. Or three, as Mrs. King said, the school committee could agree to reduce the current proposed budget based on the available funding. I know there's been some questions around, well, with some recent developments, how is that going to impact the budget? So I wanted to just provide some information again, try to provide that context as we go forward. So we do initially have some cost savings, however, I'm wanting to show you in the next few slides where that cost savings is slated to go. So as you know, we originally quoted twenty percent increase in our health insurance. Thankfully through our efforts of our Human Resources Department and this department, we were able to lock in a fifteen percent. We had to make some concessions and change some of our plans, but that is, you know, projected savings of five hundred and seven thousand dollars. We did ratify one of our two contracts that we are currently negotiating, the school committee is currently negotiating, for potential savings, at least for the first contract, of up to three hundred thousand. So obviously we're looking at eight hundred thousand plus. However, as you'll see in future slides, that money will, depending on which scenario we go with, go directly to try to offset some of the shortfall that we may be presented with. And so that savings trail will not exist. Question was asked about access and efficiency, our, the school districts, regional school district version of what the towns commonly refer to as a catch. Our current balance is two point one million. We are projected, we have another warrant, another payable warrant to go out, another warrant for end of year expenses. But we are hoping to be able to have two point two million in ED to be able to put into ED. That, the school committee has already voted to allocate from FY twenty-six, two million dollars out of ED. So looking at what our current balance is, looking at what we're going to put in, and then take out, we should have, again, projected balance of up to two point three million dollars. Certainly could be a little bit less, certainly could be slightly more depending on how the next few days go at the end of this meeting. Question was asked about what other available funding could be for the district in the way of grants. Unfortunately, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, they don't release their grants until the summertime. So we really don't have a sense of what we're going to get in grant funding. You've heard obviously a lot of discussion and debate at the federal level. As you know, some of our grants do come from the federal level, Title I and our little grants. And so we're not really sure what those are going to look like, a lot of better idea come the summertime. And obviously, as you know, the state has not approved the FY twenty-six budget yet. I know there's some talk, potentially maybe even as early as tomorrow, there was discussion, but obviously, you know, we don't have any confirmation of that. So we'll really have to wait and see what the state does. And obviously, I just wanted to kind of point out a few things. This is the FY twenty-six cherry sheet that the state puts out. You can see here the different amounts. We build our budget based on the governor's proposed budget, which comes out first typically in January. So you can see our numbers there that we use for revenues and obviously some of our expenses. And then the House takes the budget under consideration, and they propose a budget, and the same thing happens with the Senate. The reason why we don't fluctuate our budget as it goes is because you can see depending on whose budget we're looking at. If you look at the governor's budget, total budget there for deputy seats is thirty-six million and change. The House budget, although slightly higher, is not significantly higher, and then the Senate budget is actually lower. So again, if you stick with the governor's budget, and then obviously the conference committee, typically the final recommended budget for the state obviously has to be approved by the governor, which hopefully will be soon. Yeah, just to review some of the budget numbers that we have put out there to the community, and obviously in this forum at school committee and online. Back at the end of March, the March twenty-six meeting, these scenarios were shared with the school committee and with the public. Obviously, just to kind of review the numbers, and you can see the color coded corresponding key down the bottom. The first gray bar is the ninety million plus budget, that is what FY twenty-five was, these are all operating expenses. The second is the town available funded budget, or the town approved budget for FY twenty-six coming in at ninety-six million dollars, obviously changing. Level services budget, which we have talked about, so there will be no negative impact or positive impact with all staffing and services, we remain consistent voting in FY twenty-six, it was a hundred and two, that was initially presented to the public at the public hearing. And then based on the feedbacks, we reconsidered that and proposed a hundred and six million plus dollar budget. And obviously, that number was the number that went forward to the towns, it was approved and was placed on the ballot for the special election. And then just to remind everybody, the FY twenty-six recommended budget, or recommended budget by the superintendent was a hundred and nine million dollars. So you can see the different scenarios that we have already discussed throughout the process and throughout the, the spring. And, you know, I want to give it more into greater detail as to what potentially our scenarios may be. And just to kind of recap, obviously, all scenarios are still on the table because school committee needs to make a decision of what budget they will move forward with. I want to focus on three different scenarios tonight. That's not to say that others are not on the table, but I was asked to prepare a third scenario. And just to show you the context for school committee and obviously the general public. So certainly, level services is on the table, the one oh six that was presented is certainly on the table. For the superintendent budget, it certainly can be on the table, and then obviously a different as proposed. You see three scenarios before you. Two where you're going to be very familiar with it because you've seen them multiple times, you've heard me talk about them multiple times. The first is the town approved budget of ninety-six million plus. And obviously, if we show there the corresponding assessment percentage increase, the dollar amount, what the FY twenty-six assessment would be to the towns, plus what our anticipated state funding through chapter seventy, the educational funding, seventy-one with transportation reimbursement, and then other revenues such as, you know, local contributions through ED and these electives. The town approved budget, as you know, we already say, would result in a six point four million dollar shortfall. Where did we come up with that number? Obviously, we're looking at level services as our baseline, how do we maintain all of our services? So if we take that level service number of one oh two and, you know, reference it against the town approved budget, you're faced with a six point four million dollar shortfall. Level services is also a number that you've seen, Mrs. King presented this budget to you at the public hearing. And so again, you can see the percentage increase for Rainham, for Bridgewater, the dollar amount increase for both, the assessment to the towns, and then the corresponding state funding. There would be no changes to current staffing and services, we would maintain all of our current staff and be able to provide all of our current level of services. The new option I was asked to prepare this evening was something potentially in between those two. Reflective of trying to hold on and maintain as many positions as we possibly could. Certainly, it would still result in the loss of some positions because as you can see, if we were to go to what, you know, this is referred to as the post-election option, we would still be four million plus in, in short. Just so you know, what I've tried to do in the next few slides is take each one of these scenarios, again, some of this is repetitive, but just to show you the implications and the impact. And I start with level services, obviously because this is, as you've talked about, the one that really, we won't see any changes either way. We will be able to maintain, again, current staffing and current level of services. So there'll be no reduction in staff, all of our retirements would be filled. Our average class size certainly is still high in this scenario, twenty-six to thirty-two at the elementary and middle school level. And then the high school level, again, depending on the section, we're looking at twenty-five to thirty-five. Special education, which certainly has been an area of concern throughout the school year of school committee and mine, and certainly of the community in large. But we are starting, projected to start to hear compliance, which is obviously where we want to be. And obviously, our current elections at the high school would be maintained as well as extracurriculars and athletics. The ninety-six million dollar town approved budget, you can't kind of go from one end to the other, and then I'll talk about the post-election budget in a minute. You've heard me go through this and the negative implications and the impacts that this is going to have on our district. Again, some of this I, although I planned for it, I have it all on paper, I've talked about it, I'm not really sure I can really wrap my head around what this is going to look like in September when school opens, but we are ready to go through this. We are, you know, currently looking at, as I stated, a six point four million dollar shortfall. We are looking at, obviously, a reduction in staff, forty-plus positions across the board. That's teaching positions, that's support positions, that's administrative positions, facilities, but positions in no area of the district was less than touched. Obviously, if we've talked about this, obviously, the more positions we're unable to bring back and that we have to eliminate, we spend sometimes have to eliminate even more to cover the costs of unemployment, which I'll get into in a future slide. We have retirements that will be filled. Average class size K to eight will be thirty to thirty-six, obviously depending on, you know, these numbers are also based on current enrollment. As I've shared in the past, a recent trend has been plus one hundred students to open the school the last two to three years. I have no reason to believe that that's not going to happen again, just based on past trends. So these numbers could look different come September. I know Ms. Poehling and her team in center registration are continuing to update us on students moving in and doing enrollments. And, you know, that's something that we're taking a very close look at. We're worried that we may start the school year out of compliance in multiple programs in terms of service delivery. Obviously, you know, we have every intention of trying to bring back as many of our students' services positions as possible and making that a priority because we need to be in compliance. As I've shared before, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, on three occasions this past year, had interviewed after a complaint filed by parents because they didn't feel as though the programs or children were in, were in compliance. And the department found that we were out of compliance several times, so we did have to add staff as the year goes on. Again, looking at the needs of the students coming into next year, there is a possibility that we may begin the year out of compliance. Especially when we look at service delivery, when we look at caseloads, it's almost impossible for some of our service providers, you know, they have thirty, forty, fifty students on their caseload, we need to actually provide for the required minutes. So that this is a, you know, distinct possibility. Obviously, I've shared with you the loss of electives at the high school, we're looking at approximately forty electives lost. And again, you know, decisions the school committee will have to make in terms of fees for athletics, or whether or not they become self-funded through raising fees for extracurriculars and athletics, or the potential of having to make the decision myself, whether or not we have to reduce them or even eliminate. Again, this is not a scenario that we want to hold in school with, unfortunately at this point, because the override has failed in both towns, this is what we're currently faced with and what we are currently claiming. Just to kind of walk you through, because we have to close this six point four million dollar shortfall, this is what we've been claiming for. So just to give you a sense, and unfortunately, you know, it's going to see at the end that it just comes down to people, and the majority of our savings, unfortunately, it's, it's people. We have worked with both towns to establish the possibility of using some of the capital funds that were then allocated for capital projects to go to operating costs for one year. Obviously, we cannot use one-time funds to re-occur the cost, but we know just to try to stop the, you know, damage that we may be faced with, we would reallocate some of that capital funding. As I mentioned, the savings that we have from our health insurance would go to the six point four million dollars, so any savings that we saw is now gone. We had offered a early retirement incentive to our teaching staff, we allocated two hundred dollar, I'm sorry, two hundred thousand dollars for that. We only had three staffers to take advantage of that, so we did have money left. We were going to, our intent is to use that money to repurchase items for next year, thus freeing up a hundred and forty thousand dollars in next year's budget. I've talked about the possibility of, at a minimum, increasing sports fees to six hundred dollars per student, per sport. That would bring in, again, based on the current enrollment, the current number of athletes, a projected five hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. Certainly, school committee will have that discussion, I know Mrs. King will mention this in a future budget sub, that number could be higher, which obviously would reduce the shortfall even more. Retirements, again, depending Retirements, again, depending on looking at how many we may be able to fill and not fill. We have sixteen retirements now slated. We'd like to be able to fill some of those, but potentially not all. But we're looking at one point three for retirees. We don't fill those positions. So savings there. Obviously, as I've mentioned, we've reduced administration, we've reduced facilities, support positions, central office staff, partner positions, and and such. So that savings is five hundred eighty-one. When you're asking, again, what's the difference in that dollar amount? Some of these positions, you know, some of our teachers retiring, you know, retiring at, you know, approximately a hundred thousand dollars after, you know, thirty-five years. Some of these support positions that we, unfortunately, have reduced are currently making forty thousand dollars. You can see that's where the discrepancy comes in. Those fall retirements are typically at the higher end of the scale there, unfortunately. These reductions are at the end lower. We've already made reductions to technology, teaching, and learning for next year. Potential savings through negotiations, as I mentioned, there was potential savings of up to three hundred thousand dollars. That savings will now go to mitigate this shortfall. So we're looking at our remaining shortfall of approximately one point four million dollars. The only other place that we really haven't touched is that kind of active employees. So you can see, we're looking at, right now, twenty-one teaching positions. This is not, obviously, I just shared with you, other positions that were eliminated. But looking at twenty-one teaching positions being eliminated. Now, when we look at what the salaries would be for next year, the cost of benefits, that's approximately one point six million dollars. So we, you know, in essence, have mitigated that shortfall. However, as I mentioned in previous presentations, even this evening, looking at those twenty-one positions and the other positions that we're potentially looking to eliminate, we're anticipating about six hundred thousand dollars in unemployment costs. Now, obviously, unemployment costs, as individuals find employment other places, those costs may be reduced. But what I do want to point out is, regardless of what happens, we are already paying unemployment costs for these individuals. Our teachers, as you know, we've seen letters already. And so any teacher that was non-rede or the position was eliminated, while we are going through this new process, they are eligible for unemployment. And I can assure you that all, if not many, have already filed for unemployment. So regardless of what happens, what scenario, any decide on tonight or school committee decides on tonight, then next action, we are going to be having unemployment costs that are next to the force here. Certainly, as some of those individuals may, again, take employment in other districts, and I can certainly understand why they would, but I hope they have it. But, you know, we will have that. We did for FY twenty-six, again, we just did our general budget. We had budgeted three hundred thousand dollars for unemployment. So you can see that, you know, remaining shortfall exists there. Now, obviously, there's some potential savings because of the amount of teaching positions eliminated for one point six versus the one point four. But just to show you what the unemployment cost would be versus what we budgeted, you know, there is a regular shortfall. How could we potentially make that up? Obviously, some of this additional monies or, you know, potentially, again, this would be a decision the school committee, looking at, you know, excess and deficiency, taking additional funds out there if necessary. The post-election scenario is really not much different than what I just reviewed. The only difference between the town approved budget and the post-election scenario is we would look to maintain these twenty-one positions. So adding one point six million dollars to the ninety-six million dollar budget. But all of these other reductions, not building retirements, making these other reductions, increasing sports fees, any other potential savings that may have been established, those would all still go to eliminate this shortfall. So the only difference really is we would try to maintain these twenty-one positions. Now, obviously, we're going to have to look at, you know, these twenty-one positions and make sure that, first and foremost, we're opening school with compliant special education programs. We've also made a commitment, I made a commitment, I know school committee has talked about this several times, parents have spoken about this, that they would love to be able to see lower class size, especially at the primary level. So we'll certainly take a look and take that a priority. And then looking at enrollment levels and trends. You know, as we have a better sense of students moving into the district, you know, we may have grade levels that we didn't anticipate. Now, it's certainly, you know, fifty to twenty-four students moving in that picket a grade band, we may need to add another teaching. But our priorities that we've discussed in the past, compliant and enhanced special education programs. Because we don't want to just offer the bare minimum. We don't want to be just compliant. But certainly, we want to do that from a regulatory standpoint. We want to be able to provide our most honorable students with the highest quality of education. So that's a priority for us, a priority for me, in terms of advocating for that. And then obviously, reducing class size where we can. Certainly, we'll focus on the primary level. But again, class size projections right now are only based on our current enrollment moving up. So that really is the difference when you look at the ninety-six versus the ninety-seven plus. We need to add that one point six million. So you're still going to be facing a shortfall. We're still going to be reducing positions. Obviously, we have other support positions that we're reducing. We have retirements that potentially may not be filled. Average class sizes will still be tied even with, you know, trying to prioritize some of those lower class sizes. And these are rated because you know we could have one classes. Obviously, last, you know, but we have projections. We're going to have some classes that are high. High school, really, we won't make any significant impact there. So we'll still have class sizes of thirty to forty-five. We will, again, be projected to start here in compliance because of the commitment of adding, using some of those twenty-one positions to make sure that we do that. But we would still see the significant loss of electives at high school. And then obviously, having to take up the extracurriculars and athletics at the middle school or high school. So just to recap, these are the three scenarios I was asked to share with you this evening. Again, these are not the only three scenarios that exist, but the others that we've already talked about. I know you well personally about where. Really was focusing on this post-election option as a possibility. So again, just to review next steps. It really is, you know, the school committee must determine how they want to proceed this evening. They're either recertifying the current budget. They are reducing or amending the proposed budget to a lesser amount or they are due to agree to a reduced current proposal. That's my presentation for this evening.
All right. Questions for Mr. Powers? Or we can jump right into discussion. Mrs. May. Can you hear me?
No.
Try again. Pardon? Try again.
Hello, hello? Testing. My question is, in light of the failed override votes, what do you interpret as the core message from the community? And what strategies will the administration implement to address these concerns and secure a different outcome if we ask them to vote again?
I don't know if that's directly to Mr. Powers.
I'm sorry, you have to repeat that. I couldn't hear you.
In light of the failed override votes, what do you interpret as the core message from the community? And what strategies will the administration implement to address these concerns and secure a different outcome if we ask them to vote again?
Well, I think, obviously, what strategies we'll deploy. I just repeat, obviously, where, you know, we will make reductions where we can. I think, obviously, depending on, you know, the direction the school committee wants to take this evening, will really dictate what we do next. I think, obviously, we want to be able to continue to be transparent. We've shared every ounce of information that we have. We have, you know, been open and honest with all of our documents, with all of our budget, answering difficult questions along the way. And I've said this several times, I welcome those questions because I want the voters to be informed. I want them to get their information from a reliable accurate source. And, you know, we'll continue to work with both towns. Obviously, we will, you know, continue to work with those that have questions that may be against or those that, you know, are in support. Our, my job is to make sure that the voters are educated. I think we did as much work as we possibly could. The parent groups echoed everything that we put out and then some. And I think it's just that we will have all the zoom.
Madam Chair.
Mr. McDavid.
If I may. Mr. Powers, it's not the administration's job to advocate for or against an override, correct?
That's correct.
Your job is to provide information.
Provide the information, yes.
Mr. Powers, I know there's a lot of different scenarios which could, obviously, you can't present them all. Presented several just now. One which you didn't elaborate on would be the impacts of a one-twelve budget on staffing as we head into September. Obviously, if there's no budget in place, you outlined what the steps are. I could remember the one-twelve scenario. Could you talk a little bit about what staffing would look like at the start of the school year on a one-twelve budget? And then realistically, are you to have a better budget approved before that December first deadline? How realistic is it to be able to then properly staff up and adjust mid-year to the school year to implement that new budget with hiring and whether teachers are little or whatnot? And then, I guess, the last point would be to maybe talk about what the impacts of a full year of one-twelve budget would be.
Sure, great question. So we're actually in the process, and I know Mrs. King mentioned this, that Miss Davenport has been working with, to provide all the documentation. They actually, they're the ones that have established that budget amount. Although we have a sense of what it may be, we haven't actually seen that figure yet from them. So to be able to give you a concrete number of what, I really wouldn't be able to do it. I think, you know, moving forward, knowing that, you know, we're going to be, obviously, airing side of caution because I don't want to bring the staff back to then have to turn around and lay that off. You know, if that's the case, then so be it. But I don't want an intention to do that. So we would, you know, proceed as we, you know, going forward, really looking at the impacts of what that town approved budget would be, the ninety-six million dollar budget. And until we kind of get a, you know, definitive number from the state, we're going to operate under that assumption unless, you know, we hear differently. Because we know, regardless of what school committee does tonight, if, you know, if they recertify or a lesser amount, there's still going to be some time. So we know there's going to be some positions that we may be able to bring back now that we don't be sure which correction. But, you know, sending out almost a hundred, you know, non-redules, we're going to be very conservative in terms of how many positions we bring back. We started to connect with some of our professional teachers, that have positions that we had to lay off. She let them know that it does look like what we call, maybe some of the positions to start. But again, that's a very small number compared to, you know, a hundred of the candidates. So we're going to kind of take it in smaller chunks. Obviously, you know, once we have that number in Desi, we'll be able to better, you know, project out for sure what the data would look like based on that one twelve.
Madam Chair.
Mr. McDavid.
Just to clarify with the superintendent, if we don't resolve a budget ourselves by December first, the Commission of Education takes over the finances of the district. Is that true?
That is correct. That one-twelve budget will remain in effect for the remainder of the district.
But the Commission of Education will take over the finances of the district if we're not, if we don't figure it out by December one.
I guess we're definitely then fall out of the purpose.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. May.
The reason why I asked the question I did, if the sense is that the community lacked information to vote yes, then thinking about which of these options give us more time to educate the community. If the community felt that it was too much, then that would inform or decision to determine reducing the ask. So that's the rationale behind why I asked, what would the takeaway from the override vote? In light of that, I was curious, and I don't know if this is appropriate or not, which of the three scenarios would you recommend? And if it's not appropriate.
No, that, I mean, we're here to discuss, and that is appropriate to ask.
And so if you could share which of the three scenarios you would recommend and why? That would be helpful.
Sure. Like I said, I can't begin to speculate why the community at large will... Let me just say, only a portion of the community voted. A very small amount, maybe thirty percent of each community voted, which on a tax implication is outlandish to me because it affects everyone's taxes. Whether you have children in the district or not, it affected everyone. Renters, property owners, everyone. But the people that did vote, the majority of those people said no. And what I heard from people was, they didn't want to increase their taxes for whatever reason. A lot of it was, they felt that we should live within our budget. Again, we do not fund ourselves. We create a budget, but we don't fund ourselves. We create a budget based on the needs of our students. And then we asked the towns to fund that budget. And this year, they said, we cannot fund that budget with the needs that you have. That's fine. So the community has said, we're not going to foot the bill for that. Fine, if the community wants the towns to support within the budget, then I think that's what we need to look at this year. Next year, it's, we're going to be back here again. But I think the community needs to know that this is not just an education or a children-only issue. It's town-wide issue. As much as I hate to say this, because I want everything, like Mrs. DiAmorino has been our staunchest supporter for getting the kids everything that they deserve, the public has said they don't want to do that. And I feel like we need to show the public that this isn't just a school thing. It's not just if I have kids at the middle school and high school that affects me. I think they need to see that we're going to maybe put forth this post-election option and say, we will take some cuts. We understand we need to do better with our expenses. But also, we expect the towns to look within their own budget of where they can pull additional funds right now. Maybe they need to make cuts, maybe they need to take free cash. I think we all need to share in this responsibility right now. And that's how I feel. There are seven of you else here. I tried to give everyone options. Do we stay with the town one and have an immediate budget? That's going to be the most painful option because the kids are going to feel that, the teachers are not feeling that. The towns are not going to notice if they don't have kids. Recertifying, I don't know that the towns will have the appetite for another override the same thing. I don't know if our parent community that was out there every day, like, standing out there, I don't know if they'll have an appetite to be able to do that again and get failed again. So I feel like, right now, we try and go for the post-election option and see if the towns can find the money, can maybe put some layoffs and show them that they, show us that they have a stake in it. And we all need to get, working with the towns immediately, and figure out what going forward is. If it's, like Mrs. Mallon said, do we do constant education, constant outreach between now and next year to try and get people on board and to try and bring us up to a level where we're funded where we need to be? Because we definitely need people not looking at Facebook for information. We need people to have real information and know that it's affecting everyone. Well, it's just, I'd like to know what everyone else is thinking or where people are thinking. I'm one of seven, but one of eight others, so I want to know what everyone's thinking. Mrs. Condon, I'm referring to.
I want to start to say I'm incredibly disappointed in our community. Thirty percent of people to vote is just outrageous. I have kids at the high school, or will be at the high school where the biggest take is going to come. I have kids crying at home because they're afraid of what's going to happen to them next year and what it means for their education. I want to say is, coming in here tonight, I was like, let's shoot. I want to say is, coming in here tonight, I was like, let's shoot for the middle. There's going to be pain all around. I guess where I am just so troubled by this is, last year, we likely cut 20 positions. This year, we're going to potentially even have a post-election option, 21 more positions plus other things. At this point, I have not seen either town take a hit. And that, to me, is unacceptable. It's the school. Manage today within the budget and take the cuts. And neither town is looking at their own staff and their own programs and reducing. You know, somehow, in my head too, I also am like, excuse me? I'm like, screw them. Let's just go for the, go for the 312 budget and like, fight this. But I know, in talking to people, the people, the parents that have supported this over the last three, five, six months, they're exhausted. Some of them are already fighting more. You know, they stood out in 100 degree weather, 12 hours, 100 degree weather, 12 hours yesterday to support this. And I cannot thank them enough. It is a fight. So right now, I just try to bear transparent. I, I'm somewhere in between the post and the initial 312 budget. There is no way, and heck, that I can support the town-supported budget. There is no way. And our special education kids, I cannot imagine what that would mean to them. And we would put us on significant having compliance.
All right. So I did speak with the Rainham Select Board too, just to kind of get an idea on the budget with the option we were presented. Some facts I do want to share is, Rainham's entire budget went up 4.2%, while the district went down 5.65%. The police budget this year went down 2.1%. The highway department went down 5.3%. Assessors went down 2.5%. Rainham eliminated its town hall meetings position. Highway has five unfilled full-time positions. And Rainham has enacted higher inquiries. So, you know, I appreciate everyone's frustration. I do believe that Rainham is taking cuts in where they're able to. And I understand the disappointment and frustration many are feeling, or both towns voted in a decisive manner that at this time, there's no appetite for an override. I for one have had sleepless nights just watching the division increase in both towns as we approach these anticipated votes. I've lived here since 93. I went to these schools. I heard many say that folks who voted no, do not care about our children, our teachers, and our community. Do you honestly believe that? At our March meeting, when we voted on the budget, that was going to require, I had mentioned that it was assured to me that if an override does not pass, that we can then come back and pass a budget that is affordable to the towns at the time. I promised I would honor the will of the voters, and I graciously asked everyone to accept it as well. Well, here we are. I encourage my fellow committee members to do just that. I also stated that regardless of the outcome of the vote, I promise to continue to work diligently along with my other school committee members, as well as Superintendent Powers and his team to assure we're providing the best possible education and experience for our students that is within our means. As everyone can imagine, getting the money would make things a lot easier, but that's not the position we're in. Our community has spoken and has challenged us to go back and continue to scrutinize the budget line by line and ask any and all questions. I for one am up to this challenge that the towns have presented us with, and I encourage my fellow committee members to step up to this challenge as well. In the meantime, rather than causing additional tension and division between neighbors, I would love to see everyone bring this energy to the stairs of the State House. I for one would definitely join in. Perhaps we can get in touch with other towns that are facing similar challenges and bring them along for the ride and make our roses hurt to the air together.
Ms. King, if I may, just a question or two from this town board. Could you give me the numbers again on the Rainham police and fire that they went down how much?
Police, I don't have anything for fire. It's just police budget went down 2.1%.
Police budget went down 2.1%? And does that include any pay increases they're going to be getting soon?
They're still in the...
So that doesn't, their budget is not included or raised for the police officers?
I don't have that in front of me.
Will that, will that, will that rate be retroactive to work they've already done?
These are questions I have to follow up.
Okay. Just checking, just asking questions, that's all. Thank you.
More abstaining. I do... I mean, we agree with this kind of primary, so that what the towns clearly propose is completely unacceptable. We can't take this level. The gap will increase in the coming year. And the voices that have come up here tonight, I've really expressed what the people want. It's amazing how we didn't have anybody come up here during the initial attack public comment, who voted no and why. It speaks volumes. I think we do have another option that I do plan to put out there. Looking at the cost savings, looking at potential increases for the EAD, also with some raised fees that are related to non-structural activities that will so late for 100 and 6.200 mark. But I think we have another option out here that lessen the burden on the both-town people. We've heard that they buy, they vote to not, oh well. But also, both towns are already speaking about free cash. This would have been a good to put that out there. And the lack of presence is absolutely tempting.
Ms. King.
Mrs. Minkin.
Question, really trying to get a sense of how, you know, how informed Mr. Powers is of the desires of the community. Since being on this, in the seat as chair, we received two different petitions from the community. One, as far as how the superintendent, the process for the superintendent, and two, on the class sizes. Were you ever able to reach out to anyone in those petitions? I ask because having that connection and reaching out to engage community members might have opened a door to educating them on the level of rights. So my question is, did you use those petitions as a form of outreach to community members?
For the FY '26 budget?
No, just the two petitions received, the appointment, on your appointment, as well as class sizes. Those petitions included the names, addresses, and phone numbers of community members.
I had conversations with some. I certainly won't say I reached out to all on that list. As far as class size, I think you've seen that come through time and time again when we talked about our budget scenarios, school committees talked about it, I've talked about it, you've heard from community members, and our budget reflects that. So in terms of taking that feedback, I think it's evident that we've done it.
Not the feedback, it's around the relationship with the community. Not necessarily the feedback, but reaching out when they reach out to us to have that outreach engagement so that we can tie into it and have that level of trust and credibility when we make this ask. So just wanted to...
I would just put it up to the community, if anyone has, you know, a lack of relationship or lack of trust and need, it seems we're jealous, I'm happy to have those conversations. I think when, again, I take the feedback from the community, we hear them come to public comment, or they email you, and if you turn around and develop a budget that's reflective of that, again, we held a parent information night to review the budget process, took the feedback that night. I, again, I think, you know, having the individual conversations, not appropriate. I certainly have done that, and members of the audience will attest that we've had those conversations. I guess I'm not, I'm maybe not following your logic on this, and that could just be, you know, my short comment.
And I mean, specific to this issue, I know Mr. Powers, like, he did the parent information night, but we also, he and I attended several sessions in Rainham and Bridgewater at different locations in the communities. Also did a broadcast for Rainham to try and get the information out. It was somewhat attended, but it was only a handful of community members that came to each one, ones that we see at every event like this. So it's very difficult to engage the community. If we go through this process again, which potentially we will, any ideas to engage more of the community are welcome. But I know he's always been very responsive as chair. I'm CC'd on almost everything. I know he responds immediately and tries to get the information to people. And we did try and do information nights at different locations, especially in Bridgewater, to try and get the right information out there to do presentations. So I don't know how we can force people to attend that if they're not engaging.
Which of the three scenarios will be helpful for the community to weigh of the three present?
Anything other than going with what the town has already approved? Will be to go to the towns to do however their government type approves, whether it's a town meeting, through town council, where they vote. I'm an expert on town council government. Mr. Fitzgibbons might weigh in on that. But any of them. If we take the 3%, 4%, 6%, 7%, we send that to DESI. They have the appropriated funds already. We don't go into a 112 budget. Any other recertifying or any other option, we send that to the towns, and it's 45 days for them to approve or disapprove, or whatever way they need to go through that process. So that, that process is lengthy, other than accepting what they've already appropriated. Yes?
I would just like to say is, the administration ethically are not allowed to advocate. It is on us as school committee members to educate our community and advocate for what we want. We are residents of this town. I know some of us have been out there and advocating for the budget and advocating for the override. But ethically, I mean, Mr. Powers is a resident of Rainham. As a resident, he can do whatever he pleases, but as the superintendent, his job is to put the information out there, but not to advocate because he is not allowed to, honestly. And I would just implore that the school committee members, it's our responsibility as school committee members, as residents of this community, to educate people and put their information out there.
I just want to make one other comment. I know Mrs. Davenport did say about the will of the voters, and Mrs. Arley did bring that up during our conversation. And I appreciate that. I read that the will of the voters was, they don't want to increase their taxes to fund this. It is not that they don't care about the schools, care about children, et cetera. They do want it on them to do this. So the will of the voters was not to do an override to pay for this. So it's on the towns right now. So if we have to share the burden with the towns, I feel like that's still within what the voters have stated. And I don't want to devastate other town departments. Obviously, we need all of our town services, DPW, police, fire, all of that. But I feel like we all need to share some sort of burden, and we can't shoulder, again, losing a ton of cuts after a year of 24 cuts. So just to say that.
Mrs. King.
So I have one other comment.
Yeah, no, I was just going to say, that's what I believe this school committee's been advocating ever since November, December of last year, that we all have been asked to do more with less for too long. And we, as a school district, departments, as parts of the town, have been asked to do more with less. We certainly didn't want to take from any departments from either town, nor did we want the departments in either town to take from us. We all wanted to have a rising sea level, and so I feel it's pretty appropriate if everyone feels a similar set of pain, then that makes sense to everyone. But if you keep coming back to us, what's going to happen next year is, we're going to be back in the same position, and it's just going to keep going like Rapt Dog Stay, unfortunately. Thank you.
No, I agree. And also, I mean, even yesterday, the fire department was here with the cooling station. They have worked, police and fire are always working as partners with us. So this is not anything to cut any other department. We just cannot bear to lose so many cuts again a second year in a row. Also, my only thoughts regarding the level services budget, we presented that March 12th. As much as that was one of the budgets that we put forward, that still requires an override. I do not believe the towns have a 15% to 16% level service funds available. That would still require an override, I believe. I don't think they can make enough cuts or have enough free cash to cover that. And if we're going to put out another override, even if it is a very small amount to cover that, that's still asking parents, again, to campaign and help us support an override for something they're not going to see any return on. It is going to be the same education and services and staffing, or nothing better but more taxes. So if even our parents that supported us are not going to see any return, definitely the greater community, I don't see supporting it. So that's why I, that's my big concern with the level services issue.
At this point, Madam Chair, would you be looking for a motion to approve something?
Unless, we have any other members that want to weigh in. I want everyone to have their question answered.
Yeah, unless I question and more comment. And I think, I think a lot of the points that have been raised on the stage today, invited by the committee members earlier, are all very valid. You know, I think what we're seeing here is, you know, common passive government management, we're being asked to say, this is the pot, this is the pool, and this is what you have to live in, and this is what other, by the way, fire and police and other departments have to live in and live within. Right, meanwhile, with Mr. Powers, right, an average of 100 new students every year coming into the district, right? Yet the towns are taking very little, maybe no efforts to maybe slow that down. I think when I've talked with a lot of folks over the last couple of months, first, when I made the decision to get involved in the school committee, which, by the way, running unpoised despite everything that's going on, is actually a little disheartening, right? I hope that we have more involvement, right? And, you know, but as I talk with folks making the decision to get involved, after getting involved, and come up to these votes the last couple of days, you know, the folks that are against this override, right, yes, it is about protecting their own money, but a lot of it also is about their discontent with how our towns are run, right? And I think whether for the override or hence the override, that's something that we all have to come. And I think, you know, regardless of what we walk away from at the end of tonight, whatever steps are ahead of us, I think we need to try to figure out together, what are things that we can do that are mutually beneficial? How can we smooth out that influx of 100 new students coming into our district every single year? There should be a conversation about that. Should be at the Select Board, Town Council level, should be at the Planning Board level. What are things that we can do that if we're going to let developers come into our towns in front of local development, how do we get something out of that as towns? We're going to build, if we're going to have a council say, the rules in the building code allows for somebody to come and build 100 new units, let's use our opportunity as citizens at town meeting, or Bridgewater in the election, to as residents, put forth measures to put some controls in place. You want to come build 100 new units? $15,000 per feet per unit on top of everything else, which will come to the schools, or come to police, or come to fire, or come to water and Bridgewater, which are all in this, right? There's creative ways that the towns can do a little bit more and be more proactive than to just say, hey, it's March, and here's our tax receipts, and this is what you're going to get. Who should put everybody, not just the schools, but all departments across both towns in a better financial state? So again, regardless of, you know, what we decide at the end of this meeting, I think that's what we need to think of. That's what we need to focus on. You know, I think, you know, we talked a little bit about leadership in the beginning of this meeting. You know, I think just, you know, shows real, you know, leadership, being able to, you know, say, hey, the voters have spoken. The voters have spoken. I wrestled a lot with this, very, very sleepless night, right? There's what's right, and then there's what, you know, I was elected to do, which would serve the will to the voters to a certain extent. But we all need to remember that it's our, it's our town leaders, for the Rainham Finance Committee at the town meeting, Mr. Parents say, we can't recommend, right, more money because they don't think it's responsible. they don't think it's a responsible utilization, right? Their job is to make the most of the tax money we do have. That's not finance committee that I want in my town, as expenses are increasing. For the planning board, you know, good job on the Walmart, multi zoning thing in Rayham, that was actually very smart, but other than that, you also develop in a lot, right? We need to encourage those boards and others outside of this committee, outside of this room, we should take that 1,800 people that are in that advocacy group, right, that has been so active over the last couple of months, and let's turn that enthusiasm in a way that can continue to have an impact, just outside of just talking about overrides, because as we said, we're gonna be right back here next year, nothing changes, right? We need to have real change within our community, we need to change the way that our communities are run, if we wanna make sure that we're not here next year and the year after, and the year after.
Mr. Githen, for you.
Yes, Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Mr. Githen, I just make an observation, that if we actually, the eight of us represented all the voters in the town, five of us would not choose to vote on this budget. I'm just telling you that. Thank you.
No, and Mr. Guthrum made a good point. We definitely need to push our towns to look at growth of population and increasing revenue. I've gone to town council meetings, and they're not pushing increasing revenue. There's great ideas out there, and they don't wanna hear it. And Rayham needs to do the same. Think about how do we grow revenue without the population vote? We need more revenue because the expenses are just increasing two-fold every year.
Stuff and Chalk has been baking on 144 since November. We knew last July a year ago that they were closing that building. There's nothing there. There's development in Lakeland, Tomlin, 144, I think they're over there. Tomlin is a very active economic development chairperson, excellent, right? And we are just letting things happen to us instead of controlling what happens in our community. That is what actually needs to change.
Ms. Thomas?
Okay. I was attending the budget set meetings prior to being on the school committee, and I learned a lot. I fully stand behind the budget that we put forward in front of the voters. That is the needs of our students, staff, admin, everyone involved. I don't know how on school committee we can advocate for less than what our kids deserve. I totally agree with the consensus, it's a revenue problem for the towns. I don't, the town-supported budget doesn't support the school system. We need more, so it's a tough poll, but I don't see how I could do anything other than ask for what we fully need and deserve.
Ms. Davenport?
Just thinking about the revenue idea on one of our ad hoc meetings, like at the beginning when we set it up, Ms. Hamerlin came, and she had brought some ideas, I didn't know, like, we, like, looked into those any further, you know, in regards to maybe revenue that we can make here at the school. She brought some good ideas.
I think you've, uh, Mrs. Arley?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Sorry, my bad, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, she did, Ms. Davenport, 100%, she shared some ideas, but standing here before her, I can't remember what those ideas were, in terms of...
I know, Mr. Chaka, like, I mean, I think one of the things was like their utilization, right, fees for some of our rooms, and I think you were getting that site up, and, you know, like sponsoring maybe the fields, you know, if we can get some business there, like, we, I think we need to start moving in that direction too, so we're not relying just like on the voters for an override with the money. Like, we have, we have opportunities just within our school district to get more revenue and as well as the town, so. And Sarah, if you're listening, I totally apologize for misquoting the thing.
You know, I think one of the things, I know it's being talked about, the community is the concern about sports, and one of the things that's being thrown around right now, and I don't know the exact number, is there's a lot of actually fundraising that happens at the high school, if you don't have kids there, it is a ton. And FOBRA does a phenomenal job, and, you know, that is one of the things that's being talked about, is how do we work with FOBRA to help support our schools? They do a lot now. You know, the sound system at the football field was paid through FOBRA. If you have had kids at the high school, the first meeting they go to is sports, is a sports meeting, is let's fundraise. It's kind of disappointing, actually, when that's all that the kids are doing, is fundraising the very first time they make the team. But it is part of what happens now, so I do think that is an avenue we can think about. I don't think it's gonna solve a lot of our problems, and maybe solve some of the sports problems. But I know some of, I know a particular parent, actually fundraised it for the tennis courts, and there are now sponsors, banners on the tennis courts, because that's how they're paying for stuff. So some of that is happening, not, I think, full scale, but it is definitely out there and happening.
I feel like we've kind of been all over the place, and I have several motions I could put on the table, but I'm not sure where our feeling is. Oh, Mr. Loesch?
I'd like to propose a motion for an amended budget of 105 million, 200,849 dollars, an increased allocation from the E.D. funds from 2 to 2.8 million. And reviewing this, this will do a decrease of 1.8 million, which covers the 800,000 savings we've had, also an increase for the E.D. funds, also allow us to do adjusted rates for sports, not as high of an impact as recurring, opposed with the level service or town-funded budget.
Allison? That's fine, we will need to have a discussion about the E.D. then. It has to be separate motions, so it can't be one entire motion. So do you want to amend that to just do the E.D. discussion first based on the E.D., or do you want to do the budget itself first? I'm going to have to do a motion to recess for a minute and figure out the calculations of that. Okay? So we need five minutes to talk to town. Did you have something regarding that, Tim?
Uh, if we add motion in a second?
He is going to put on the table a motion to amend the budget to, was it one of that one?
I'm okay talking about it, as am the chair, but I believe we need, like, all the voting language correct, otherwise we can't send it. So if we adopt this, I'd just suggest we recess the meeting till tomorrow night to get the language right with Mr. Loesch and whatnot, because I don't wanna vote something that's incorrect by as to language and then have it all disallowed.
Ms. Loesch, would you need until tomorrow to figure out all the calculations?
I'm okay waiting, I mean, you still have plenty of time. I just wanna make sure if that's the will of the committee, that we understand, we can't just do it that way, because there's very specific language to it, has to be sent.
I know. So Mr. Loesch made a motion, if he had a second, sorry.
I second it.
For a quick, for session. All right, if we're going to do that, we would need to, I also need a discussion about the E.D. So I don't know which way is appropriate to have that discussion, because the E.D. would build into that budget.
Mrs. King, for me, it would be helpful to understand, and I don't know if we have the ability right now, I have tons of numbers.
So it's on the floor, if we wanna have a general discussion, that's fine. I cannot vote on it without the particular members, but we can have a discussion on the median clarification, yes.
I just, for me, I'm trying to understand the numbers, the percents for each town, and that's what I would like to have, see, right, how is, what that would mean. So again, if I...
Do you mean what the potential increases would be, or what the percent going towards each town is?
What the percent going towards each town, the increase, the percent going toward each town. So I'm assuming it's somewhere in between, so if you take the 1.5, Mr. Fitzgibbons, I'm going to you, if you take the 1.52 and then minus the 2.5 million, right, 2.8 million, sorry, 2.8 million. What does that come out to? Approximately? Do you mind counting?
Well, I'm not doing math.
Usually you're a math guy. You're a math guy. 104, what? No, it wasn't. Oh, it's only 8, it's put it there.
Mr. Loesch, if I may ask, what's the difference in the top line that you, between what you just cut down and your number?
Overall, it would be 1.8 million.
So you're suggesting we take 800,000 from that?
From the E.D., yes.
So again, that we, the government take on 800,000, therefore, a million would be left to the towns, that they could cut from the vote that we just lost, and that would be roughly 650, 653, 50, 600, 400, and so what was Rayham's assessment, if you remember this game, I mean, if you remember?
Rayham, 400?
Yeah.
Was it right on the floor?
So if we cut 400, that would be a 10% drop. What was the percent increase for Rayham? I promise not to do math in front of everybody.
What happened right here?
Okay, okay, so whatever it was, it would be, let's say it was close to 40, probably, I don't know, but whatever it was, it would be just a couple quarters less. It would be certainly less than the local ser, it would certainly be much more than local services, right? So that just gets covered when I'm a school committee, at least in a range of what I'm thinking. Hopefully, I didn't do very much files to the local.
Somewhere between level service and what was an override.
Yeah. Well, I just guess we just talk about, we want that top line, and if we can't get to six votes on that, which by the way, this game, correct me if I'm wrong, we need six votes to pass the budget.
It does need to get two-thirds, yes. Two-thirds need to agree on the budget.
Thank you. So if we can't get to six votes on it, I don't think we need that so well.
And that also means to be a motion regarding bringing another 800,000 from...
Well, I would just say, let, if we could ask Mr. Loesch, maybe to change the motion, and just say, I'd recommend 105,000, 105 million top line, and add 800,000 from E.D. We're gonna have to continue this to tomorrow anyway, if that's the will of six people on this committee. But we could add at least now, you know, we can be done and move on. If it's not the will of six people, then we can move to another option.
Do we wanna take a vote if we're willing to see, does that help what you're saying?
That's what I was suggesting, but it's Mr. Loesch's motion, however he wants it.
Do you want the town to reconsider if we have the votes? Then I think we can recess.
Or you could just make a motion to recess now, just tomorrow.
Well, if it's a weak point, I'd wanna drag everyone out.
Well, I'm just trying to give everyone their options.
I'm still trying to understand where the figures come from, it's a little hard to carry down this end of the table exactly, right? But I know we have to figure out the impacts to, you know, the community, but like, the reference to E.D. and having to understand how much of the one-time money that they're dipping into and potentially exacerbating for next year, blah, 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 like, just trying to, I think it just still should kind of restate what the proposal was.
So this is the basic way to keep off the proposed option. We had 106 million mark, right, noticing the current district savings, or the recent negotiations, or health insurance and retirements, right, incorporating that number, then also looking at, like, we will need to increase some fees around current sports, it won't be as drastic as some of the other proposals we'll have to make, if we went in terms of level service of town-funded, and then also looking at increasing our allocation for E.D. And right now, I think we said we have about, certainly superintendent correctly, 2.2 million we'll have for next year?
Yes.
Which, which will leave us with 1.4 million, which will still keep us in good shape if we have any sort of, you know, major issue in the school, which is what we're looking at, keeping those funds in reserve for. That's, you know, one of the most feasible ways to keep us at the recommendations to meet students' needs and what we recommended back in the original proposal, proposal's budget, but also incorporating current savings and doing the larger allocation for E.D. to still meet needs, again, try and lessen the burden on the taxpayer. And as I noted before, you know, hopefully the towns are really serious about it and a lot of support it, and free cash has been mentioned many times, hopefully they come forward as well.
So this hinges on taking another 800,000 out of E.D., which would only leave us 1.4. Every year consistently, we've dipped into that more. It was 1.4, 1.5, 2 million, 2 million, since I've done a budget. To leave us with 1.4 million going into next year, which I don't see the financial outlook being even better, or probably even worse, that makes me nervous, because if we're cutting everywhere we can right now, we're not trickling down very much to E.D., and we're not gonna be having another 2.8 million to follow. That makes me nervous to take that much out in one year. So I don't know what other people feel about that.
Therefore, proposing a budget that meets students' needs, right, and we're looking to continue to make progress in that direction, and with the proposed budget, we're looking to really better meet our students' needs, certainly not what we currently are, I don't know why we're gonna see a decrease in the E.D. projection moving forward. Right now, we're just looking at taking the savings, we're looking at increasing, so the up goes, started a little point, but there are districts everywhere, they only consistently peak anywhere from, you know, you say 600,000 to 1 million in their E.D., just because that's what they choose to do. Do I think it's a good practice we keep on? Sure. There are certainly things we could have, we could see happening that are unforeseeable. A boiler could go at the high school, if you need to replace that, there's a significant amount of funds. Kids will go with residential placements, so we'll do with funds again. However, given the current situation, this is a means to meet the voters in the middle, put something out there that is certainly more amenable, and still look to meet our kids' needs and head in that same direction. And if we're proposing a budget like we did this year, and we yield 2.2, I don't see why we could be able to be in that same position again.
Thanks, Mr. Loesch, for putting this proposal together. I just had a couple of questions. So anything other than the town-supported budget would go to our town leadership, and then it could result in another override. I'm not seeing how this, I appreciate your, you know, we do want, we do wanna make an effort to meet the needs of our students and get what's best for them, but if we result in another override this year with this proposal, then we're setting ourselves up for an override the following year. I just don't see how we're making progress, and maybe I'm wrong, so please correct me, but I don't think this situation gets us out of more than a one-year plan for funding.
Well, pardon also putting in place the district's five-year sustainability plan, also looking at proposal, increase in positions, is one of the means to keep us within budget, and also make sure we're not exceeding it or having to look at layoffs again. is one of the means to keep us within budget and also make sure we're not exceeding it or having to look at layoffs again. So that was one piece that was put forth earlier by Superintendent Powers to make sure that, you know, we're going to have to go backwards. Also looking to keep salary increases in mind in that position as well. And one of the really the point here is let's just incorporating the current cost savings that we've identified and looking at much less increase in fees than what we would be at the other two levels, the level service or the town proposed. And keeping it in line with what was still proposed for when it's gonna be. So in theory, we're still meeting that 106.2, but we are making, uh, cost adjustments and then looking at E and D numerous.
I, I don't know if Mr. Fitzgibbons or Mrs. King, I don't know if I get to call someone out, but maybe I don't wanna do that. My question is, do we have any understanding of the free cash that is available in Bridgewater and in Rainham? Because at one point I thought I could totally be making this up, that Rainham had like three to four million dollars of free cash. I could be wrong.
So I do not know the amount of Rainham's free cash. However, I do know they allotted, they appropriated a large amount of free cash to their public safety stabilization account at the last time of year in anticipation of that project. So I do not know how much they have right now.
Because part, part of me is, I, I would love to know much free cash the town has. If they're sitting on a lot of capital, like, we're gonna use our E and D and go down to 1.4 million and we're pulling from all kinds of things and making cuts, but the towns are sitting on all this money and they don't wanna use their own free cash? That is a problem for me, a big problem for me.
Senator.
Uh, Mrs. May, don't have a question?
Oh, okay.
Seeking everyone's help here. I am struggling to understand how the will of the people will change if we put forth a proposal that requires an override. I'm just needing help to get there. Because all these arguments are really sound and really strong, but I cannot get over that the people have said no to both overrides. And we don't have a sense as to why. And if we don't know the why, we don't know what proposal we'll go through and get a yes. So I'm really just looking to get some perspective on if we choose something that requires the town to vote again, what will we do different to get a different outcome? And so those, that's why I asked the questions I asked, not to indicate that Mr. Powers needs to be an advocate, the advocate or anything. It's just to understand, do we have a sense of why the community said no? Because if it has nothing to do with, if it's not pertaining to the amount, reducing it won't, won't get us to the yes. So just really wanting to get perspectives on options that require override and how will we get a yes?
I don't know, and I don't think if we send them anything that's gonna require an override, that it would be any different than it was. Um, and that's my concern, even with taking E and D, additional E and D, if I would be in favor of that and any of the cost savings. I think anything above that post-election, I don't know if either town would be able to support that budget without some sort of override vote. And I don't want bad will between the district and the towns and the people. I want them to know that they're heard. We need, we need a budget and we need to retain as many staff as we can. And I appreciate Mr. Loesch has advocated so much to try and keep services and staff. But as Mayfield said, I don't, I don't know whether it would be any different if we put an override up there or not. And I think we need a different option to share the pain across to both towns and try and keep as many staff as we can and still get a budget as fast as we can.
Mrs. King, do we think the post, maybe Mr. King, Mr. Fitzgibbons or Mrs. King? The, the post-election option, those amounts there, do we think the towns can fund those budgets without an override? Is that the assumption?
I think so. For Rainham, it's an extra $713,000. Over and above the town-supported and for the other, it's an extra $849,000. So we could reduce the capital that Mr. Powers had said. We, they could have free cash, they could cut people within different departments. I think the numbers are attainable without potentially an override. However, they're gonna do that. I think that's the only option that I see that is not what they had proposed and could mitigate some of the damage to those that have services. And I'm not saying it's a good choice, I know it's not a good choice. But if we ask for an override right now and it doesn't fail, that's terrible. If we ask for an override and it passes, it's not gonna be enough to keep us the flow and get as where we need to be either. So I don't wanna go back to the towns after them again and say, hey, thanks last time, but like it still wasn't enough. Not really any great options right now. Mr. Guthrie?
Can you just elaborate on where the 6.4 or 7.24 for the post-election option came from? Did it just sort of gut from what we think based on conversations? Or is that grounded in some type of a measurement?
I guess those, those numbers are based on the assessment formula that we use. So we take obviously the budget and then allocate the assessments to the town. So those, those percentages there that you're referring to, I think is what you're referring to. It's all based on enrollment. So we look at our student enrollment, that drives the assessments that go to the town. So that's what it's saying, right?
So I'm, Mr. Loesch has this potential 105 million on the table right now, and Mrs. Conroy and Lombrantos seconded it. I'm going to get, take a tentative vote if we want to proceed with this one. If so, we'll have to recess, so I can figure out probably until tomorrow so we can get accurate numbers. This budget vote is very particular and lengthy, um, and must be calculated. So I had not prepped that, so I don't have that ready. So I just want to see if we can forward with that right now. And if it is the will of the committee, we'll recess so I can figure it out. All right. Uh, Mr. Loesch has made a motion for a budget of 105 million, and Mrs. Conroy and Lombrantos have seconded that. I'm taking a tentative motion to proceed with this budget, pending a recess to get the current figures. Um, all those in favor? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Tentative, we'll do a roll call. Uh, Mr. Fitzgibbons? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Sorry, we're gonna do a roll call vote to see if we proceed with this one. And if it is the will of the committee, we will recess to calculate until tomorrow. If not, we will move on to another alternative that someone will want to propose.
I'm in favor of a different alternative, but I'm always willing to listen, so. I should vote yes, but I'm gonna vote no.
Mrs. Davenport?
No.
Mrs. Conroy and Lombrantos?
No.
Mr. Loesch? Mrs. Mayfield?
No.
Mr. Guthrie?
Uh, I appreciate Mr. Loesch's enthusiasm, but unfortunately I'm a no.
Mrs. Hawley-Tomas?
No.
And the chair, no. So thank you, Mr. Loesch.
Mrs. King, nevermind. Tell me if I say this right. Uh, I would make the motion to adopt the post-election option, but I actually would like to increase the amount by $800,000, plan that for E and D. I don't know what the dollar amounts are, I would probably have to figure that out. But, um, so instead of a deficit short call of 4.8 million dollars, it would be 4 million dollars.
Again, Senator, I think this will be followed by a proper recess, I'll then come back tomorrow with a real number of the vote.
So if we're just, uh, I will take a second just to put it on the floor and then-
I'll save it for discussion.
So Mrs. Conroy and Lombrantos put a motion, Mr. Fitzgibbons has a second. Um, I need one moment to just talk to Mr. Loesch. Just a moment, just to recess for that. Rachel, do you recess?
I'll just, I'll just, I'll just.
I'll make a motion to recess for 5 minutes.
Uh, so, so you have a second?
I-
Yeah, yeah, right, right. No, I don't, well, I can't stop the lives here, so I can't stop the lives. Just put it back, yeah, you can't really hear us.
I don't know.
So, it's eleven hours. Is there a bit? I think it's crazy.
Oh, yeah.
And by accident. In case I find one too.
How hilarious is that?
There's one in my office, and I could not read it.
I, I, everything's March, so I think, I think. Exactly, yeah, I have them, like, I have them labeled, a lot, most of them are labeled, but then also, so, even if they're just going to rob.
I started writing as a sheriff.
Yes, I saw that. It's like that stuff.
It could be a seater. It could be the people. I'll have to tell somebody.
The board would like.
As maybe it's.
Just like that.
Good.
I just think, yes.
I was trying to.
Good.
I just think, yes.
I was just trying to.
We can't cut it. Emotionally.
Maybe it runs. Someone, my, my, I was trying to.
Right, you're gonna get a. Four, nine. Oh!
All right, thank you everyone so much for letting me have that for recess, I thought that was for her. But thank you for your patience, because we're coming back from recess at nine nineteen. Um, so, um, if you just did the calculated, calculations based on this is going up, Rento. Is the post-election option, but instead of the two million in E and D, she would like to, as her, Mr. Loesch had discussed earlier, two point eight million in E and D, so pulling another eighty thousand in E and D, just to level set that was her suggestion. Okay. Um, I will entertain a motion then to approve the tran, this is several motions that we need to go through for each particular piece of it, and then we can discuss and vote. Um, I will entertain a motion to approve the transfer of two million eight hundred thousand from the district's E and D fund to support the fiscal of year twenty-six budget. So, a motion made by Mrs. Conrad LaBrento, seconded by Mr. Loesch. Uh, discussion and questions on that, the E and D transfer.
Can you restate the amount, please?
Two million eight hundred thousand. So, we had originally said we're going to do two million. Um, Mrs. Conrad LaBrento is, again, like Mr. Loesch had talked about, pulling another eight hundred thousand, so it would be two million eight hundred thousand in the E and D to contribute towards the budget of the post-election option. So that would reduce, um, assessment to what we have.
So.
It says, it was adding eight, so instead of.
So, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Seven ninety-eight, seven ninety-eight.
So adding an eight hundred thousand to.
Eight, yeah, eight hundred seven would be ninety-eight million dollars. Five hundred thousand.
This way, it lessens the shortfall by eight hundred thousand. So, I guess that's why. It just would be, please, the ninety-seven five hundred, ninety-seven five hundred. Change.
I think that was my group, that our shortfall would not be four point eight million, it would be four million dollars.
Oh, I see, okay, I see where you're going.
And I think, Tala and Rachel, when they, so if those characters, they did use that eight hundred thousand dollars to pull over.
Okay, no, I misunderstood, so that would change.
Sorry, then.
This is a work in progress, we're seeing, so that would change assessment. So I think that would be fine, we'll only need to short recess then, because Tala has those numbers, so we can just rearrange the calculation. All right, yeah, I misunderstood. Yeah, so, we'll hold discussion while Mrs. Babeloma works on that.
But it's still two more, it's still.
Yes.
E and D is still.
Yeah, the E and D motion is on the table, so she can work out what the calculations, what that means.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Fitzgibbon.
At, at the end of the day, with the numbers you have in front of you, having just worked them out, because I didn't see them, is the assessment to each town the same assessment as what's being laid in post-election option? Those assessments did not decrease, correct?
So, the way I took it, yes, the assessment would decrease slightly, because we were adding that eight hundred thousand towards the.
Madam Chair, I, I really don't want to do this, but I'm, I'm very nervous, we're gonna get this vote wrong. I, I'm gonna make a motion to recess till tomorrow, if that's, so let's do the preliminary vote again, to see if we want to do it. Recession till tomorrow to get the vote right, though, just my opinion.
Mr. Fitzgibbon, not nine.
So, do you want to, does someone want a second then?
Well, I'd just like to see if, I'd just like to see if we're gonna be in favor of this option, with six people with it. If not, there's no reason to continue discussing it. I mean, unless it's five to three, then maybe you could continue discussing it, but.
But, I guess. I can agree to Mrs. Fitz now, because I would think that the assessments in town would stay the same if we're, we're raising it up to ninety-eight million five hundred thousand, whatever.
But the only number we're raising is that district number, by eight hundred thousand. So the re, the revenue from the town would stay the same, the other revenues would stay the same. It would just be, the district's throwing in more, the top line is increasing more.
Correct.
There's no, there's no decrease in what these assessments, the town, was my interpretation of what you.
Yes, yes, the, the, yes, the town numbers would not change, we are, just our district number would change by eight hundred, increase by eight hundred thousand, and then the overall top line would stay.
Tala, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but just my understanding is, in order for the assessments not to change, because they're based on enrollment ratios, we would have to keep that ninety-seven million dollars number that we have there, to keep the assessments what they are currently. But school committee in addition could vote to allocate an additional eight hundred thousand dollars from E and D to reduce the shortfall. If we add the eight hundred thousand to the total budget, it will now change the assessments.
Yeah. Oh, so, so, we can apply the eight hundred thousand dollars to the deficit, but not change the numbers, the, the town assessments? What, Mr. Powers, you're saying?
Yeah, so, I, I believe in, again, Tala, correct me if I'm wrong, the way the motion is written is that we would use currently two million dollars from E and D towards this ninety-seven million. Those assessment numbers would then stay the same as they currently are calculated.
Two point eight.
Well, so then, the two million's already in there. But again, because we're offsetting the budget with additional, uh, E and D, it does change, because it's the whole part of the local revenue, it does change the assessments towards the town. So then, what, we would have to do it in addition to the two million dollars, separate from the operating budget. School committee would then have to, uh, vote to approve, to use another eight hundred thousand dollars towards that four point eight million dollars shortfall. So that, that's how you would be able to do it without changing, is my understanding, without changing the assessment numbers. If we, if we change the top number, it's going to impact the assessment numbers.
So, just so I'm clear, Mr. Powers, when you say top line nine seven seven nine six, right, nine, ninety-seven point eight billion, what are the numbers that comprise that ninety-seven point eight billion? I get twenty-two three from Rainham, thirty-five five from Bridgewater, which adds up to fifty-seven eight, right? And then, add another two point eight from chapter seventy-one, which gets us just a little north of, north of six hundred, I mean, sixty million, sorry, and then add thirty-four two, which gets us just a little north of ninety-four, and then add two point nine seven other revenue, which gets us to, in my mind, to the ninety-seven eight. What, it was Ms. Conrad LaBrento's intention to do, was to bring that ninety-seven eight number up to ninety-eight six. That is my understanding. So, I don't understand if we're just going to keep the same ninety-seven eight as the proposed budget, how we don't end up defeating the intention of Ms. Conrad LaBrento's motion. And that's why, that's why I don't want to do math on the fly. That's why I strongly urge you recess this meeting. Do it right tomorrow morning, come back. And if, if it's the will of the committee, if we find out that it's six to two against list, then, oh, fine, let's move on to the next thing we can talk about. But if this is the will of the committee, let's do it right. Let's not do it, you know, on the fly with five-minute recess, just my opinion.
That's fine, if that's the motion that you intend in Ms. Conrad LaRento, we can recess and come back tomorrow. I will have to do the recalculation. I took it as taking this ninety-seven million and at putting another eight hundred thousand up from E and D, not raising the bottom line up to ninety-eight by ninety-six, six ninety-three. So, if you want to do that, we can recalculate.
Um, I'll be very honest. So, the ninety-seven-seven, if you can just please help me understand, the two million from E and D is not in there? Or is it...
That includes two million dollars.
So, my intention was to raise it up to ninety-seven-eight and make the E and D amount two point eight, it was...
Maybe, sorry.
Right, I'm sorry, ninety-eight, sorry. To me, um, was to raise it to ninety-eight-six, whatever it is, five. And include that other, other eight hundred thousand. And if Tal has a better suggestion than how to do this, I'm all open for it. But I, maybe back to Mr. Fitzgibbons, is this concept, are people willing, or people agree with this concept before we even try to, like, tweak the numbers a little?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to wrap my head around the budget. Alright, I'm gonna do another roll call and see if there's interest in continuing with this budget. If there is, we can do a recess until tomorrow to figure out what these calculations are. I'll start this way.
There's a discussion on that first?
Your part, yes.
With more time, will we be able to get information from the town if that post-election option will be denied? Or is there just another... So, what I was shown during the break, and it could be totally wrong, can we be, something different from what's on the state certified website for town as of seven, or maybe it was last year? It looked like Ritter had three point five million dollars. Again, that's what's certified, three point five million dollars. And Rainham's, whatever, it's called, the number announced, the stabilization, stabilization fund. And, and Rainham had like four something, four million something, what is certified on the state's website. And so, with more, so I'll be able to ask them, based on that, if this increased amount, or was the lower level would need to double-balance? I, I mean, I don't, I mean, I think we can ask the towns, but I don't know if they're gonna give us an answer by tomorrow. Because I don't know if it has to go to their town council and their selectmen.
We can have informal conversations with their county managers, but they're not gonna give us a definitive answer on what the will of their committees are as to whether they would decide to vote and take out the council. Just, I mean, I would personally say, sure, we would take two million out of E and D, no problem. Like, if someone asked us, so, I don't know if they could confirm what they have, but I don't know if there would be such a definitive answer without having a meeting to discuss it for nine minutes. Mr. Vettel, if you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand, are we... I don't want to get into a situation where we recess, we come back tomorrow, and then someone says, okay, well, what about six hundred thousand? And now we're just talking about different numbers, right? And we're just arbitrarily throwing out sums of money, right? As we kind of do like break glass in case of emergency option. So, I guess what I'm trying to understand is the spirit of this extra eight hundred thousand dollars from E and D, is it, you know, are we trying to show the towns that we're willing to put more skin in the game? If we're gonna ask Rainham to go from three percent to six point four percent, and Bridgewater to go from four point six seven to seven point two, to say, hey, Rainham, you throw in six fifty, whatever it is, Bridgewater, you throw in, is it seven something? And we'll throw in eight hundred of our own. Is, is that the spirit of what we're trying to do? And then we get that four point eight million down to, now it's down to four million? Is that ultimately what we're trying to accomplish?
I mean, I think for me, that's what I'm trying to accomplish. I think if we can get that deficit down, that shortfall down as much as we can, and live with it, not live with it, but good faith, is that, that is my hope, that. And that the towns can fund and not have to vote it over.
And with that eight hundred thousand, that would still leave approximately one point four-ish in the E and D fund for the future unexpected expenses?
So, I can, I can start and see what the committee feels. I'm trying to wrap my head around tentatively what a ninety-eight, five ninety-six, six ninety-three budget would look like. And I, I don't know of Ms. Conrad LaRento's intention. I think if we add in the eight hundred thousand, it brings up the amount of the budget, so we're still gonna have to recalculate assessments. It's not totally gonna be just to the district to use, like... I don't think the intention is, maybe what we can do... I, I don't know all the calculations offhand, but if we raise the, if we raise the whole budget, it's gonna change all the calculations. It doesn't want to come off the top.
But we're getting more, but we're getting more.
Yeah.
It would raise theirs maybe a little bit, or adjust them a little bit, but not, not huge dollars, what I, I mean, I don't...
So, just again, I don't want to belabor the point. If we, we take the total budget, so let's say we're talking about the ninety-seven million dollar budget. We less our estimated receipts, so chapter seventy-seven-one, and then it also includes district contributions. If we're including more in district contributions, it actually lowers the, the number that gets sent to the towns, thus reducing their assessments. So, I'm not disagreeing with you. I think you're trying to raise the overall budget to ninety-eight and change, which I understand. But if, if we agree initially to take two point eight more out of E and D, it's going to show up in the estimated receipts, which will then lower the assessment to the town. That's why the assessment numbers of the towns were initially going down.
So, that's not my intention.
Right.
Which I think makes sense, because every year when we add in more money, it's an attention to, we do have a certain attention to. Yes, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Uh, just in case everyone watching on YouTube isn't asleep by now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put them all to sleep with these questions, as I've done it. So, Mr. Powers, let's talk about, my favorite thing to talk about ever in the world, the statutory method. And, and so what, what we, what you've just described in the budget is kind of halfway there, correct? Because we start out, here's the number we want to spend. And I believe what Ms. Conrad LaRento has asked is that it is our intention to spend ninety-seven five nine four million dollars. That's what she's suggesting the school committee's intention would be. We then reduce that ninety-seven by chapter seventy, chapter seventy-one, other revenues, including another eight hundred that the town, that the school district is gonna put in.
Correct, yes, so far.
Therefore, therefore, the rest left over has to be picked up by the towns. However, however, the state tells each town what their minimum contribution is, correct? So, then you take the, the number that you had, subtract each minimum contribution, correct? And then you're left with one more leftover number. Then you take that number, divide by total students, and allocate it out to the two towns. So that, in fact, that's why, if you look in the, in the town, town approved budget, Rainham's going up only three percent, and Bridgewater's going up four point six seven, because the state told Bridgewater that, in fact, they could afford more in their, in their required state contribution to the district in, as an increase than Rainham could afford, right? And that's why there's that difference to begin with, and why it carries through. But it gets smaller going forward, as we're asking for more and more, because that slight difference from the beginning gets overly magnified by how we're overwhelming it with extra spending, which is done on a per pupil basis, and not according to the requirements of the state through net school spending. Correct?
Yes, that's exactly true. So, that, that first number, the minimum contribution, isn't just based on enrollment, where all the other assessments, transportation, the operating assessments are all based on that enrollment formula. The minimum contribution does factor in enrollment, but it also factors in education, the wealth of the community. So, it, it's, it's not gonna be significantly different than the enrollment formula. However, it, it won't necessarily match, because it does factor in the wealth of the community.
And in fact, I'm sorry, one, just one other thing, just as a, as an observation. Uh, the dollar assessment increase to Bridgewater in the town affords budget of one point five million is very, very close to actually what the minimum increase in contribution was. Not, from net school spending I'm talking about, not what they actually increased. There's plenty of room under net school spending, but if, if you, if you look into the formula, I believe, the required increase for net school spending for Bridgewater is about one point three, or one point four million, something like that, so, just an observation.
I guess, Ms. King, maybe it's to, I'd ask for your recognition, or Mr. Fitzgibbons, is there anyone on the committee here? I would love to be able to contribute more from E and D and get that shortfall dollar down. How we do that, I need open suggestions. What is the easiest, best way to do that? I think, again, I don't wanna also then subtract the town's numbers from either.
Then I think that might be look and certify the post-election option and increase E and D allocation at a later date.
I hope for keeping on, that has to be done by the third, can we do two separate votes like that? That's what we're seeking to do.
Which is mine, so we need to vote now.
What would the wording be on that, with the other side?
As long as you please ask, to be appropriate, if I do, or hope to be most adequate. For example, if we're recording, we can tell.
So, so can I, so I need to do two motions?
Alright, regarding the separate eight hundred thousand, then, we have a different motion and a second on the table. Do we want to withdraw that motion, Laura, and then we'll go back to this other motion?
Sure.
I'll try. Alright. Mr. Fitzgibbons, we do not have any motions. Mrs. Conrad LaRento, do you have a discussion that you may have to...
I, I, I am very uncomfortable voting on any, uh, anything other than what you have a vote prepared for tonight. I, I will, I will vote no, no matter what it is, I'll just say that.
Okay, understood.
That is to finalize anything, I'll vote in favor of concepts.
But we need to, and, or and, we have to do that by June thirty?
Correct, or it's held up, yes.
I can be here Saturday morning at nine AM if necessary.
I cannot. Kensei and Sabebo calling.
So, the number, has a kind of discussion? And I don't think I've been over to this yet, so... If we voted to approve the post-election option, the ninety-seven seven nine six was actually here, we could then vote to use two point eight million dollars, two point eight million dollars of E and D.
Two's already included.
Right, two's already, is two already included in here?
Two million is...
So, so, and then it would be another motion to include eight hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, so I have, based on what we had discussed and presented, I have motions available for the post-election option, which includes two million dollars in E and D, because that had been a previous discussion. If we want to do, so I have those votes available, and I have those calculations. If we also want to do a separate thing to add in, totally separate, over and above that, eight hundred thousand from E and D, Mrs. Vettel has said that can be a separate vote. And that will be separate from these budget votes.
But that has to be done, but that has to be done by June thirtieth, anyway.
Yes.
So, we're gonna have, we have to come back and meet on a separate vote on that.
Regarding the eight hundred thousand, I could, I could...
I, I just don't, I just don't understand, like, what's the difference?
So, Ms. Vettel...
I'm lost, and that's unfortunate, because that makes you want to know.
Fine, I'd rather you ask questions than that. Could you explain this eight hundred thousand? Ms. Conrad LaRento, and if I'm wrong, please tell me. Wants to do the post-election option. How do we separately vote an extra eight hundred thousand to come off, to add into this, to make up this difference, on the bottom line of four point eight million? But not changing the assessments, or et cetera? How is that a separate vote, and how would that work?
Alright, thank you, let me start by saying this. If we are going to increase the ninety-seven million by the eight hundred thousand, it would definitely change the assessments to the towns. That's one. But according to what Laura said, if we are just looking for, only to reduce the assessment to the towns, then the eight hundred thousand from E and D would do just that. Because once we bring in additional eight hundred thousand, it will reduce the assessment to the town. But then, the other way to look at it is if we increase the total budget by eight hundred thousand and also increase E and D to by eight hundred thousand, it will be a par of what we currently have, the assessment to the towns will not change. That's what you want. So, that means that the total budget will go up by eight hundred thousand, which will be like the ninety-eight million that you were talking about. But then we have to bring additional eight hundred thousand from E and D to offset that. So, that means the assessment to the towns remains the same. Are we still on the same page with that?
So, if that is your intention...
So, can I just, okay, go ahead.
If that is your intention, Ms. Conrad LaRento, those are different calculations, so we would have to recess until tomorrow. So, I could take a vote to see if you... So I could take a vote to see if people are interested in proceeding with that?
I, I don't think that's necessary. I think you have the right vote in front of you. You just have to, you just have to add eight hundred to the nine seven seven nine four, and say, offset by blah blah blah, and then two, and then it becomes three point seven.
I can't do air math like that.
Other revenue, no, I mean, I, I'm well.
I don't feel comfortable.
Yeah, no, I'm fine. If you don't feel comfortable, then please, no.
The revenue becomes three point seven.
Right, and it's, so it's offset, and then to Ms. Babalola's point, everything else remains the same. Yeah, thank you.
If you would like to recess shortly, I can talk to Tal if I can get those. Otherwise, we would have to recess till tomorrow.
No, but nothing changes.
Yeah, I, I.
Nothing changes.
I'll make a motion to recess in five minutes.
You know what? You know what I'm gonna do? I'll go over against his face. It can. Me too, I know. Um, yes, my daughter, absolutely, yeah, my daughter did give me two thousand. Oh, I think she admitted to it, yeah. Yeah, she graduated too, yeah. Okay, yeah, she did.
Thank you. We are coming back from the sunset, nine fifty-four.
All right, uh, I did calculations with Mrs. Babalola, and what Mrs. Conrad Lomarinto explained, and what Babalola explained, that did work out. It changed, it upped the bottom line of the post-election eight hundred thousand. It did not change the assessments. It just changed the bottom number, or the, the shortfall. So it would be negative seven, negative four million, or negative four point eight. So that was your intention, correct?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for bearing it.
Thank you for bearing with us. All right, um, based on those calculations, um, do we wanna go and take tentative vote, to see if we would like to go forward with this? And then read off the calculation numbers? Is that how we want to proceed? Um, so this is our entertaining motion to do a tentative vote. Um, the calculations of this vote goes forward. Um, I will read out the list of the motions, which is the E and D amount, motion with apportionment assessments, and then capital, and then, um, interest in fund. All right, um, Mrs. Mayneville? Sorry, this will be a vocal. Mrs. Mayneville?
Can you speak that motion out loud?
Um, it's just going to be a tentative motion for, um, to put Mrs. Conrad Lomarinto's motion on the floor, which is the post-election plus eight hundred thousand, raising the bottom, um, line of that budget for ninety-eight million five hundred and ninety-six thousand six hundred and ninety-five. Um, adding in an extra eight hundred thousand for E and D. Um, based on the calculations doing that, we added the E and D money, so the shortfall will be, that will be taken off the sho- the bottom, get it done. Um, the bottom, um, negative four point eight million. So the assessments did not change, um, but we, we added in to the.
So the motion is to vote on?
It's just, do we wanna proceed and go through all of these calculations?
Uh, okay.
Um, if not, we'll move on to a different one. Um, Mrs. Mayneville? Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoy Thomas?
No.
Mr. Bush?
No.
Mrs. Conrad Lomarinto?
Aye.
Mrs. Davenport?
No.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
And the chair of votes?
Yes.
So, Madam Chair, I may suggest?
Yes.
Your tentative motion passed, but it didn't pass six to two. But I believe there are, so, who voted one way? And some people voted, some people voted no, would like to go one way, and some people voted no, would like to go another. And that's fine, that's their right. Um, but if we're going to arrive at a budget tonight, we need one of those votes to change as a review. So I'd make, I'd make the motion to, and if it fails five to three again, it fails five to three again, but let's, let's go with the motion to have in front of you.
Yes, and to your point, we need six people to vote on a budget, or we move on to another budget. So, that tentative did pass, so I will read these, these votes. If they do not pass, like I said with the census, we will move on to a different budget, or discuss that budget again, and then. Bearing that in mind, the post-election option would be increasing eight hundred thousand dollars in E and D. These are the motions for that. Um, and when I'm done, that will be a vote called vote. Um, and again, we need two votes. Um, I will entertain motion to approve the transfer of two million eight hundred dollars from, eight hundred thousand dollars from the district's E and D fund to support the fiscal year twenty-six budget.
So move it.
Motion by Mr. Fitzgibbons, and second by Mrs. Conrad Lomarinto. Um, do we have a discussion and questions on the approval of two point eight million in E and D for the budget? For fiscal year twenty-six budget?
I'd just like to say, this is again money that doesn't come back, and we're gonna be in the same position next year. I don't want anyone to think otherwise. We're not finding money, there isn't a magical pot of money out there. Um, we're basically, uh, putting a, a plastic Band-Aid on a, on an arterial wound, but let's kick the can another year, why not?
No, I agree, it's just depleting all of our savings. Any other questions?
All agreeing after the eight hundred thousand vote?
After two point eight, it would be one point. All right, this will be a vote called vote for the E and D. Um, Mr. Loesch?
Aye.
Mrs. Conrad Lomarinto?
Aye.
Mrs. Hoy Thomas?
No.
Mr. Guthrie?
Aye.
Mrs. Mayneville?
Aye.
Mrs. Davenport?
Yep.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so that would be six to two in favor of the E and D. Um, next is regarding the, um, assessments and total amount of the budget. Um, I entertain a motion to recommend that, subject to review and verification by the district treasurer, the school committee will vote to approve the final budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, excluding debt and capital costs, in the amount of ninety-eight million five hundred and ninety-six thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars. The final budget figure of ninety-eight million five hundred and ninety-six thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars to be reduced by anticipated revenue totaling thirty-seven million nine hundred eighty-five thousand twenty-two dollars, and an E and D appropriation of two million eight hundred thousand dollars, leaving the amount of fifty-seven million eight hundred and eleven dollars, eight hundred, fifty-seven million eight hundred and eleven thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars to be paid by the member towns as follows. Rainham's apportionment of said costs is to be the state's required minimum contribution of twenty-one million three hundred and ninety-six thousand two hundred and fifty-five, plus the non-discretionary charges of nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand three hundred and thirteen, for a total due from Rainham in the amount of twenty-two million three hundred and thirty-three thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. Bridgewater's apportionment of said costs is to be the state's required minimum contribution of thirty-three million nine hundred and seventy thousand six hundred and seventy-seven dollars, plus the non-discretionary charges of one million five hundred seven thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars, for a total due from Bridgewater in the amount of thirty-five million four hundred and seventy-eight thousand one hundred and three dollars. The apportionment and non-discretionary charges are based on enrollments in the Bridgewater-Rainham Regional School District as of October first, twenty-twenty-four. I will entertain that motion.
Did you wanna read Rainham's as well?
I do first.
Oh, sorry. I'll, I'll make that one.
How much do I speak to the panel? Motion made by Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Aye.
A second by Mrs. Conrad Lomarinto. Um, discussion and questions on that?
Um, you'll play.
I, I, I just, I just have to put it out there. No, it's happening. I'm not happy with this either, but I, I think we need a pathway in, a lot needs to happen in the next twelve months to be able to get us to an override, or where we need to be to get a better budget. Our deficit in like two weeks before the presentation went from six million, one of our budget presentations, to, I mean, from three million to six million. So, is when we kind of go to look to help insurance.
Is that what the, the?
It was our deficit.
Do we have other comments or questions on this budget? Mrs. Mayneville?
So, listening to, um, you back and forth here, I just really wanna understand, for those who are on the budget subcommittee, um, and had multiple conversations with the towns, what is the level of confidence that they can absorb the post-election assessment increase without need for an override? And if, just re-speak again for me, if, if an override was to be sought by the towns, and it fails again, what alternative options or conclusions and plans would we have?
So, like I stated before, I, I don't wanna go with the towns supported, I don't think anyone up here will vote to approve that. The post-election option that we're talking of, I think they can find the funds for that within their operational budget, or within their free cash flow.
Just, do you think you're resolved that you need to comment on that?
I, I'm not on the Rainham Board of Selectmen, I'm not on the Bridgewater Town Council.
Your conversations with the subcommittee, because I know they're involved in a financial job with.
So, I cannot speak to them. I have been to multiple FinCon meetings on both sides of the district. I've been to town meeting, I've been to Rainham Board of Selectmen meetings, I've been to town council meetings. I cannot speak for what their committees will agree to do with their budget, but I think it's possible, based on what I have seen for their numbers.
I, I will say, Mrs. Mayneville, just based on my conversations and like Ms. King, I'm not gonna speak for either the Selectmen of the town, Rainham, or the Town Council, Bridgewater. They can speak on their own, they meet, and they do their thing. Um, we're not members of that, and they're not members of this. So, um, I don't wanna speak for them. I just get a general sense that all of the Selectmen, and all of the Town Council wanna do the best they can for the school district, and, but a lot of them are very concerned about having an override. want to do the best they can for the school district, and, but a lot of them are very concerned about having an override, especially an override as large as what was proposed in each town. And I believe that being people of goodwill, we can all act together to try to get to an answer that makes sense and get folks to support this post-election budget. That's my hope anyway, and, and my belief based on everyone's expressed opinions, to me personally.
And then, so, sorry, so it's my belief that they, it is possible, it's within their realm of possibility to fund this out of their, what they have to, to your point, if they disapprove it, and it does not get approved within the forty-five days that they have to do that, and they send it to an override to fund, and it fails, we go to a joint town meeting as other members have stated. That's a statute, we go to a town meeting if we don't fail a budget twist, I mean, if we don't approve a budget twist. And a joint town meeting, I, which I had discussed earlier, that's like a giant Rehman town meeting, where all voters who would like to attend would show up, and the voters themselves agree on a budget.
So in the discussions with the towns, are you saying that the member expressed that they can contribute?
They have said they can afford the town-supported budget, that's what they voted on and approved. Could they potentially do more? Potentially, as are we discussing here, that we could potentially do more. So I can't speak for them, I'm trying to advocate for a good faith budget, as are other people here, that is not totally devastated. Mrs. Boy Thomas?
Just where you said that we could do more, it's clear to people, we didn't find fat to trim, we're pulling from savings. That's not going to be there next year when we're facing another override.
Yes, we're not magically finding money, to your point, we're pulling out of our savings, which makes me extremely uncomfortable, leaving only one point five million in there, because if we have an emergency, that's what it's for. But if we have that money, I mean, I feel like we need to put in as much as we can, and then holding the towns to the same. And to Mr. Loesch's point, we are, we need to do something else, because this is not working year after year.
And just, just to point out, the president of Bridgewater Town Council communicated earlier tonight, and urged us to pass the town budget.
To your point, it's my understanding since I've been here, that we've never received the level of funding that we asked for. Well, we have always, since I've been here and probably before, ended the fiscal year with what this committee has designated a surplus. So it is likely that even though we reduce the E and D, that as in past years, we will end with a surplus of funds. I believe we ended with two million surplus.
Ms. King, if I may?
Yes.
And this is a vicious cycle we get caught in, Mrs. Mayneville, is that, yes, we do, we do run a surplus generally on expenses, because I believe the superintendent shuts down all general expenses after September thirtieth, and only quote-unquote "emergency" spending happens after that for general expenses. And so, and that is to drive a surplus in those lines, because we need it for the next year. We shouldn't keep having to roll over money from last year to next year. We should allow money to stand by itself and hold a little bit every year, and put it aside till we have an appropriate amount in E and D, and then run all the time at the same number. If we, if we, if we keep relying on the two million, now we're going to rely on two point eight million, we've got to find two point eight million in recurring revenue somewhere next year, if we don't want to rely on it next year to do the same thing. So it's, it's a vicious cycle, unfortunately.
I also want to clarify, so as a regional district, we're in a precarious or a unique situation. We are a town department, just like police, fire, PPW, but we're our own department outside of that. So they still fund us as a department, as they fund their police, as they fund their fire, but we create our own budget, we have charge of our own budget. So we ask them for the money, and they give us what they give us, which this year has been this. But they give us a lump sum, the stakeholders have a lump sum. We cannot go over that amount, we are not play circle like, hey, we need a little bit extra, or we're running in the red a little. We need to be conservative, we need to have a surplus at the end of the year, or get as close to it as we can. We cannot go over our budget, because we are technically a separate little town. So they give us our money, and we spend it, and we need as conservative as we can. So, yes, we do try and keep that two million, or as close to that as we can, because if anything runs over, special education goes crazy high, and we look at reverse, that's a huge problem. We will get into very trouble with the state if we go over it. So every month that budget's up, we look at every line, item by item, to make sure we are trending where we need to be. Are we cutting, or are we freezing the budget? So we look at that every month to make sure that the sub-line, the staff, the salary lines, the transportation utilities, heat, all of those things, that we're going to be okay. Does somebody want to add?
Just a quick follow-up, the surplus that's generated at the end of the year doesn't necessarily always come from unspent funds, it comes from unanticipated revenues. So for example, I showed the example of the cherry sheet, and so because we always go with the governor's number, to build our budget, that final number may be higher, and so when you look at last year's number, it was, we received additional funding, but the budget has already been approved, so that money automatically washes down to E and D. That was, I want to say in the range of eight to nine hundred thousand dollars. So when we put two million dollars aside, half of that was basically from unanticipated revenue. So it's not always, you know, on Spanish monies, it's been a food in the budget, it really is coming in unanticipated revenues.
From a process perspective, if we go back to the towns with this post-election budget, they made the decision whether or not to grant those additional funds. Is it, is there a step between whether they make a decision yes or no, and whether they decide to send it for another override vote? Or do we just go to them, and they look at it and go, override? How does that process work? Does anyone have that, I know, has anyone been sent into that?
So once we certify, we send it to the towns, and they approve it however their government hears. If they can find it within their operational budget, I think it's a selection thing. They potentially need to go to the town meeting. Town council, I don't know if they have money within their operational budget that they can hold, they might be able to just build on themselves at a town council meeting, or potentially if they can't, they will need to send that one actually. But they have more oversight over their own budget, whereas Rehman's, the selectmen are able to appropriate certain things, and other towns need to go with them.
All right, I, I think, I think the point, I guess what I'm, what I'm wondering about is, right, and, and I think we talked about this a little bit earlier, is both towns have already soundly said no to override ones. You know, I, I don't know, again, we all know the right thing is a level services budget, right? We all know the right thing is actually more than a level services budget, right, to, to grow, the district grows, but, you know, I'm also just wondering, right, if they say no, right, I don't know that having another override vote is the right option either. Right, so I'm wondering if there's a way, if they say no, then we'll go, okay, we'll, we'll come back and look at something else as opposed to an override vote, or.
So if they.
Once we submit it to them.
If they, once we send it to them, it's out of our control, so if they disapprove it, it triggers a joint town vote.
All right, the motion for the post-election option with the increase, so the ninety-eight five ninety-six six ninety, uh, six ninety-three is on the table, which I ended right off. There was a motion by Mr. Fitzgibbons and seconded by Mrs. Conrad Lovren. This will be a vote called vote. Jessica Davenport?
Yeah.
Mrs. Boy Thomas?
No.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mrs. Conrad Lovren?
Yes.
Mr. Loesch?
Aye.
Mrs. Mayneville?
No.
Mr. Guthrie?
No.
Motion failed.
Uh, Mrs. King?
Yes.
It is ten thirty. Just reading the room right now, we are not going to get, the town approved budget is not going to pass. I, I don't think we're going to get six. I, I, I would make a motion to adjourn and come back tomorrow night.
Resess.
For recess.
It has to be recessed, because it has to be continued originally.
It's recess, I, 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 if we can't get this post-election, I don't think we're going to get the town approved either. I don't know what our options are now.
I just think, I want to talk to the. Because then if they are comfortable with not doing the override, I would feel comfortable with that.
I am in agreement with Jessica.
I would just like to get their thoughts if we're putting, like, I just, we're supposed to be partners, and if, I don't think the town needs to have a paternity inside of them. And if.
So to be fair, we are a town department, but we don't ask them for permission for our budget.
Oh, I totally get that, but like, what would the situation that we're in, I think we need, like, to be good partners, I would like to know that, and then if so, I would, I would be up to do this. So, I mean, I'm more than willing, I will talk to them, I just, I, I'd be down for the reasons and talk to them.
I, I just caution any selectman or town council member about creating a serial deliberation by doing that, not violating the open meeting law, so.
I don't know that, so my issue is, and I understand what you're getting at, and what Mrs. So they cannot affirmatively tell you what their council or their board is going to do without having a meeting and a deliberation. So that's why I said, we're, we're in a unique situation, where, yes, we're a town department, and the police chief could go in and say, hey, you know, what do you, what do you think about me getting a ten percent increase, and they could have a discussion. But we are a separate entity, we have to vote on our budget and give it to them. And then they have to vote on it and say yes or no.
Aye.
So, um, we're not asking permission for that, respectively.
King, is there an offer, option to submit it with the caveat that if they're going to send it for an override vote, that you withdraw and consider something else?
So they either approve it or they disapprove it, we don't know how they're going to fund it. And we don't have a say how they fund it if they say we're going for an override. So either they come up with the funds, or they don't.
Can we specifically request the funds come from their stabilization funds?
Again, we cannot say how they fund it. We don't have any control over what they discuss, or how they want to fund it, or if they're going to fund it.
This is my, is there a question?
Yes.
It just goes to Bridgewater or Rehman, and they say no, it doesn't go to an override, it actually goes to a joint town meeting. There is no override.
That's if they approve it to go to an override. Just separate from saying they're disapproving it.
If they disapprove it, it goes to a joint town meeting. If they approve it, then they have to figure out where they get their money from, so whether that's E and or free cash or override, that is a separate process. If it's no, then it goes to a joint town meeting.
So does it happen, which is happening with the budget now, because it's a county meeting, right? And they say, well, we can't fund this, and now we have to go to an override, like, very possibly, we just want to.
Yes.
That's a possibility, right? That's a first of all to take. So I guess, like, it's, I guess, I could. I get your vote, I guess that's what I'm saying.
That's fine, but again, I caution selectmen and town councilors from deliberating on stuff. If that would make you feel comfortable, and they would want to talk to you about it.
Because they may, because as of tomorrow, you may talk, they may be able to say, we have this much in E and D, but they can't say how to fund it, because they all together collectively have to vote yes.
In an open meeting.
In an open meeting. I, I mean, I'm open to another conversation here of a budget, but I don't know if we're going to come to agreement, because I, I don't think we're going to come to six when it's town approved.
I don't want it to be pending, having a conversation with the selectmen, like, an informal conversation with them, because that's not them saying, yes, we will fund that, we agree to that.
I know, it's more like the free cash is two.
But it's not going to actually commit to anything, we have to come up with a budget. We have to focus on what we are actually empowered, and not, and not what's out of our control. Because you could have three conversations tomorrow, and it's still not moving, that's just three conversations.
Correct, but I guess you could possibly swing my vote. I understand what the caution areas, and they might not do it, but maybe it would make me feel comfortable with my vote if you would like me to vote on the post-election, I guess. Otherwise, I'm on the town approved, what I said in March, I'm just taking by my word. So I'm just giving you this option if you guys want to move this budget, I guess, that's all I'm saying.
Ms. King?
Yes.
Could you just remind the folks who are left in the committee, what happens if we don't approve a budget? Or send a letter to the, uh, the commissioner saying we've reached submitted a budget to the towns by June thirtieth? Then, then what happens is, is the budget as presented by the towns deemed approved?
If we don't certify another budget, we have, by June thirtieth, we have to reconsider, amend, or recertify our budget. If we don't, whatever the town has approved is our budget, I can confirm with Michelle.
Yeah, if you can do that for tomorrow, and then I'd just like.
That is my understanding.
That was my understanding.
We miss our deadline, we have the original budget approved.
Right, and then I'd just like to time certain on the recess motion, seven, seven P M. here again.
Well, and I'll just say, if, Mrs. King, whether this helps people or not, you can go on the Mass D O R, and where it lists every single town in their survey, and the catch is a seven one, seven one, and Bridgewater has three point five million, Rehman have like four something. I mean, that is what's certified in there, what they have with free cash is public knowledge, it's all there, I'm not sure. That's from seven one, of what has been certified as their free cash.
So is that, do I make that amendment to the motion, Mrs. Conrad Lovren, at seven o'clock here, or?
So Mr. Fitzgibbons has submitted a motion to recess until tomorrow at seven P M., same place. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Conrad Lovren. All in favor?
Aye.
I just don't know, we're going to accomplish in the next twenty-two hours, that we can accomplish. We're going to come back here, we're going to stay here for three more hours, and we're not the same outcome as, as, as right now.
Well, are people willing to move their votes now?
Ms. King, I believe you had a positive vote, I believe we're recessed at the moment.